Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. We are going to start our evening tonight with an executive session to discuss a couple of items. So with that, I will move that the board vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts GLC 30A subsection 21a3 to obtain advice of counsel and discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation regarding the wastewater treatment plan insofar as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. And further, to invite Town Council Peter Mello, Town Administrator Blythe Robinson, Finance Director Todd Lindmark, and Executive Assistant Judith Lizardi. The board will reconvene into open session for the purpose of entering into a second executive session. I state that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hear a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Kevin Calcutt, aye.
Christopher Weider, aye.
Carolyn Van Tyn, aye.
We'll see you when you come out. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Thursday, March 17th at approximately 7:22 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I'm joined by my fellow board members Chris Weider and C.C. Van Tyn. We're also joined by our Town Administrator Blythe Robinson and Executive Assistant Judith Lizardi. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much. Blythe, before we go into our agenda tonight, I just wanted to note that we are trialing a new service tonight that's allowing residents who wanted to join and participate in the meeting the ability to do so remotely. It is being done through a Zoom meeting. We've posted the link for the meeting room. People are able to log into the meeting room. That's going to give you the ability to watch the meeting via NCTV's YouTube livestream and then be able to ask questions or post comments within those chat boxes so that we could address them in the course of the meeting if we deem that they're appropriate. So if there is anybody watching at home that wants to participate, that wants to ask questions, go into our agenda on the Norfolk website or on the Norfolk Community Cage. We made a posting as well. Follow that link, join the meeting room, and once you're in there, type any question or comment you might have into that chat box, and we'll see if we can get everybody's questions and comments addressed in orderly fashion tonight. Blythe, that being said, would you mind taking us through the agenda?
Sure. After public comment, we have a continued public hearing for the FY21 water rates and then for action items. Our first one, we added to the agenda yesterday, this morning, don't remember, to consider reviewing COVID-19 announcements and updates. Then I ask you to take out of order the two discussion items that we have on the agenda because they impact the FY21 budget to discuss the revision, possible revisions to the transfer station fees and charges, and then to discuss revisions to the insurance premium cost share for retiree health insurance. And then we go back to number five on the agenda, which would be to consider approval of the FY21 water rates, to then consider determining the amount of the FY21 operating budget to propose to town meeting, to please consider adopting a remote participation policy, to consider approval of a contract with StanTech for various environmental engineering services, and approval of a contract extension with R. Kadesh Excavation for DPW services, to consider exercising the town of Norfolk's right of first refusal to purchase a property located at 75 Cleveland Street. Next, to consider appointing Elizabeth Whitney to the 150th Anniversary Parade Committee, to consider the appointment of the Animal Inspector for a one-year period effective May 1st, 2020, to consider adopting a code of conduct. And last action item is to please consider approving a request from the Norfolk Lions to erect a field of flags on the Norfolk Town Hill on Sunday, May 17th through May 30th to hold a ceremony on Town Hill on Memorial Day, May 25th, and to place a banner on Town Hill from May 18th to May 23rd. We will have taken care of the discussion items. There are five warrants to be approved, and there are no minutes to be approved tonight.
Thank you very much. All right, so that brings us to our first item this evening, our public comment period. During this time, anybody who is joining us here in the meeting, or we also gave residents the option to be able to write in an email to Blythe that we could read into the record. Blythe, I don't believe we received any emails. Very good. So I'll open it up to the few residents who are here today. Mr. Rosenberg, please grab a microphone if you wouldn't mind saying your name.
Would you prefer that I stay here?
Please, thank you so much.
Great. I'm David Rosenberg at 123 North Street. I want to make comments on three separate items. The first comment is on the remote participation that you have on the agenda. Looking at the Medway procedures, there is in section 7, Roman 2, a statement of the reason for participation, for remote participation. That was relevant when the open meeting law had a list of enumerated reasons and you had to pick one of them. Since that list has now been replaced by just saying that it's unreasonably difficult to attend, stating a reason is sort of meaningless because there's only one reason. It's unreasonably difficult to attend. Also, Medway has a form to be filled out to request remote participation. That's fine if you know in advance that you will be unable to attend a meeting, but if the situation is you're in an accident and you're in an emergency room waiting, or you had some child issue come up where you got caught in a traffic jam or something, there probably isn't time to fill out a form and file it. And so I'd suggest that that form not be required if the issue requiring remote participation came up unexpectedly. Second item is on the solid waste removal, solid waste at the DPW. The proposal from the DPW is to replace stickers with trash bags, and I think that, I understand their motivation for that. I think that unfairly disadvantages people who don't have compactors. In my case, for instance, I have certainly less than 35 pounds of garbage I'm disposing, but I use a larger bag because I don't have a compactor and can't compact it, and I'd like the board to consider that situation, that it seems to disadvantage people who can't compact. The third thing I want to mention is something that I copied the board and Town Administrator on having to do with municipal aggregation of electric rates. That is something that is not for the electricity the town uses. It's for electricity that residents of the town use, and it is an arrangement whereby one town by itself, or in this particular case, a group of 23 towns getting together, negotiate a much more favorable rate than individual households would get. And by default, everybody in town is opted into it, but anybody who doesn't want to be part of it can opt out and continue their current arrangement with Eversource. And there's something called green municipal aggregation, which basically increases the amount of renewable energy that was used in generating the electricity. And many towns start with 5% above what the state requires as the minimum. I think that that's a double win in the sense that it both reduces the rate that people, homeowners pay for their electricity and simultaneously incentivizes and requires the use of renewable sources to generate electricity. One of my reasons for bringing it to the Select Board, mentioning it to the Select Board, is that in order to proceed with that, there would need to be, the town would need to pass a warrant article authorizing municipal aggregation or green municipal aggregation. I suspect that, from my conversation with Andy, I don't think the Energy Committee is prepared to move on that at this time. I just want to mention to the board that if you wanted to make room for them to move on it sometime, you could have an article on the warrant that could be IP'd if they were not interested in doing anything now, but at least would have gotten there in case they do decide they want to do something. I certainly support municipal aggregation, green municipal aggregation because of the double win of reducing rates households have to pay and also requiring renewable sources. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else for public comment this evening? I'm seeing none, so that will conclude public comment. Blythe, on to our next item.
The next item on the agenda is to continue the public hearing on the water rates. We include in your packet the information in the presentation that Barry made at the last meeting. We have received no comments in our office since the last meeting. I don't know if you have received any comments, and as you can see, we don't have anybody here at the meeting, but because we only had two members here, we continued it till tonight so that you could complete it, close it, and then take action on the actual rates. We can review, as it happens, Barry's here on another topic, so able to chat with you about any questions you might have before you take it up.
I didn't have any questions from my end. Chris, C.C., I know you weren't here. Did you have anything you wanted to review with Barry? Chris?
I'm good.
Barry, did you want any softball questions just to make clear the present?
I'm not answering anything. Everybody's all aboard.
Well, you know what? I did have a question. I'm sorry. I guess I was confused. At the bottom of the thing, it said reserves. FY20, FY22 capital reserve costs are approximately $143,042, and will be added to the certified free cash at the end of the fiscal year. I just didn't understand that. It's the bottom page of revenue requirements.
Oh, that was in the, that was in the original, that was the original package put together by Doug Gardner.
So that's, some of that's changed?
Some of that has changed, yes. So that was what we had presented last year regarding the rates. So the reason that was kind of in there was to bring everybody up to speed on what we did before, and rates and numbers have changed moving forward.
Okay, because the metered water numbers didn't add up either, so I was trying to figure out what I was missing, so that would make sense.
That's what, yeah, that was the one that we had presented last time.
The only other thing I had, I guess, was do we, and you know better than we will, is do we have any provision for, and I guess, I guess we call them seniors, you know, who don't use a lot of water? And I don't know, do they use a lot of water? Do we give them any discount on the rate, on the semi-annual rate or the total cost?
Well, they're on the lower tier anyway, so they're paying less.
When you say the lower tier?
So they'd be in...
Tier one, you mean?
One to 15,000.
Yeah, but they're still paying, you know, but I probably would be on that tier too because I'm a, I live alone. But I'm just saying, do we give anything to them in addition to that? Because they probably, some of them probably don't even meet the minimums, I imagine. I don't know.
Some towns do. I don't think it's something that we've looked at here, but I know Bellingham does give a discount to seniors based on age and certain water usage. I think it's something we could look at in the future. I don't think it's ever been considered.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would hesitate to say we're ready to take, make a change at this point.
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do it this year, but I think we should probably, it's just one of those things you say, some of them, and I don't know, you guys have the figures for everybody, so you know who's the seniors in town, what their water usage is. Maybe we can look into that in the future.
Oh, yeah, we can actually definitely look into that.
Yeah, maybe if it fits into another tier, we create a separate tier just for that low, low usage, right?
Yeah, well, and for people who obviously are on fixed incomes and, you know, it's difficult.
Yep.
Other than that, I didn't have anything else.
Very good. Barry, anything you wanted to add?
No, that's good to me. Thank you.
All right, so this motion appears to be scripted with a lot of background behind it. I imagine that the direction is that we would read each of the rates or just cite as listed.
I think you could do either way. You could approve them as contained in the board's agenda packet, or you could read the whole thing.
Okay.
Because it was published on our website. It's available to people.
Okay. Do we have to close the public hearing?
I would. I didn't script you a motion for that, but I would make a motion to, I think we know someone who knows how to close public hearings.
Want to take a stab at it, Chris?
Sure.
Go for it.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for the FY21 water rates as proposed.
Hear a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, with that, I would move that the board approve water rates for FY21 as follows. The annual service charge will increase for all size meters by 17%. The meter watered rates will increase from FY20 to FY21 as listed in the agenda, and a capital improvement fee of $1.41 per 1,000 gallons will be charged for the new well site.
Second.
Hear a second? Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Barry.
Thank you.
All right, so since you jumped around, Blythe, what do we have next?
Next is your COVID-19 announcements and update.
Very good. Mine or yours?
Yours.
Okay.
I have some too when you're done.
You have some as well? Why don't you go first?
Well, you can go first.
Okay.
And if you don't cover it, you know, maybe you already covered it.
Okay, so I'm just going to go off of the five-page update that Blythe had provided and posted. Today, March 17th, 2020, the town is announcing further actions we are taking to address the COVID-19 pandemic. In light of the ever-evolving situation here in the Commonwealth, the difficult decision has been made to close all town buildings to the public effective Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, until further notice. All town activities, programs, and programs are canceled as well. This decision is being made out of an abundance of caution to attempt to limit in-person contact while also continuing to provide basic services to residents and business owners. The town has also begun to take necessary steps to cancel nonessential government meetings. While we certainly understand the situation is not ideal, we are proceeding with the well-being of our citizens and staff in mind. We encourage everyone to closely follow the information from the Massachusetts Department of Health, the Norfolk Board of Health, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and exercise good judgment and caution. We are asking that the public use our online resources for online payment and contact us via email and telephone with any questions that you may have for us. Essential business with a town requiring an in-person transaction must be conducted by appointment through each department. Residents are encouraged to use the online services and the drop box at the entrance to Town Hall for bill payment. Again, other business will be conducted by phone or email. Now, we'll have listed in this sheet a flurry of other departmental updates that go into more specifics for each essential function in the town. There are also reminders and reiterations of the recommendations that are being made both at the federal and state level to help prevent further spread of this virus. C.C., did you have anything that you wanted to add on tonight?
So I just had a couple. You know, my husband, Sean Dooley, is the state rep, and he gets to be on all sorts of calls with all sorts of people at the local, state, and federal level, sometimes on multiple times a day. And then he posts to his Facebook page, which is Sean Dooley State Representative, which anyone can go to and like. He posts every time, sort of a list of stuff, sort of the newest that would be of interest within a select board meeting. This one has been passed, which is the 2020 Small Business Recovery Loan Fund, which was created with a fund of about $10 million to provide financial relief to Massachusetts small businesses that have less than 50 full-time employees. And there's an application that they can fill out at empoweringsmallbusiness.org, which will give loan amounts up to $75,000 with no payment due for six months, so that if people are worried about their business continuing, if people in town are worried, that's already been passed. And there's some other requirements, but they're really, really not particularly rigid, and it would give people some needed money. In addition, there was a lab that came on today that's going to be able to do 100 tests per day, and then the Broad Institute at MIT is coming online to be able to do 1,000 tests per day. I know MIT is closed for everything, but keeping their animals alive and coronavirus testing. The numbers today are 218, and interestingly, I know people were seeing that there were confirmed versus presumptive positive cases. They've stopped doing that because it was getting confusing. So now, if it's positive at the state level, it's confirmed. So you're only going to see one number. So the confirmed number today is 218 confirmed with 21 hospitalized. That's as of today. Another thing that they did, which people may know about, but it's on my list, so I'm talking about it, is that they waived the requirement for licensing for doctors from other states. So now you have a one-day application process, and then you, so if you're an M.D. in another state, you, they will license you within one day to come here if they need you, as well as calling up retired M.D.s who may have let their licenses lapse because they don't need it. Why pay the money? They're calling them up as well. That's that one. Then there, interesting proposed legislation on municipal governance. One is that Galvin at the Secretary of State's office has filed legislation that hasn't passed yet but probably will to move elections and to also facilitate something that's being called, it's basically akin to, I'm blanking on the word, I didn't write it down, but the, when you, if I'm going away and I vote remotely, but it's because I'm going away, you can now do that even...
Absentee ballots?
Absentee ballot. They're creating sort of an absentee ballots light for people who aren't obviously going away but don't want to go to the polls. So they're looking at those two. They're going to move the elections as well as give people that opportunity to do an absentee ballot. There is legislation that's likely going to pass this week. It does not appear that it will be, there's maybe some wordsmithing, but it's likely to pass this week, which is going to waive the one-week waiting period for unemployment, is going to waive work search requirements for unemployment. It's kind of has some other benefits as well, which you can go online and check out, but that'll sort of help people financially. The, for, Blythe, and you probably already know about this, but because there is a state of emergency at the federal and the state level, if we keep track of our expenses, we're eligible for federal funding at the end, and that also there is aid being released to cities and towns, starting with cities and then going to towns that are part of a consortium. Are we part of a consortium?
Yes, some of them.
So if we're part of the consortium, they're going to release $50,000 to $75,000 per consortium, and if we're not part of a consortium, or if we haven't applied yet, you apply for that aid through the DPH. That's different than keeping track of the money. And then, they are proposed legislation, their package, which includes short-term postponement of town meetings, postponement of town meetings beyond June 30th, quorum issues regarding, addressing the quorum issues regarding gatherings of large groups. It will also cover spending authorization in the absence of a completed FY21 budget. If that becomes an issue, it will address the use of free cash in the absence of that budget, and it will, it will address the use of revolving funds in the absence of the budget, and it will address the amortization period for emergency-related deficit spending. And I have all the information on the actual proposal and how they plan to do that, but I don't think we need to take people's time with that right now.
That's great. Thank you so much.
So that is the latest news that's fit to print relative to that. That's all I got right now.
Legislative liaison.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Who is making me corned beef.
Oh.
Because it is St. Patrick's Day. There is corned beef, cabbage, and boiled root vegetables whenever I get home, courtesy of Sean Dooley.
Is this an invite, or is this just for you?
No, it is not.
Okay.
I'll bring you some, though.
We do have for you to sign tonight the election warrant for May 5th. The town clerk would like you to sign those because it's important to make sure that that is in place so that she can utilize the ballots that she's planned. Of course, if it gets changed, you know, we will deal with that, but we're, for now, we're planning to at least have that, and we certainly are talking about the dates for that and town meeting. It's been floated that we go from the first and second Tuesday in May to the first and second Tuesday in June, but we're just going to have to play that one by ear right now. The update that you read from briefly is on the website now, and I really encourage people to look at it and then look at various pages. For instance, Public Works has updated their page about what's happening at the transfer station. We're not going to be accepting some things that we were before. We're delaying some things. All that information is already out there for people, so they can get all that from us or call us. We'll all be working, maybe some remotely, maybe some here, but, you know, people will be able to receive services a little differently than they have in the past, but hopefully without any bumps in the road. And then remote participation will be getting information out to all the boards so they can make determinations if they're going to have their meetings done remotely. We'll get them some instructions for that. I think we, we're learning, staff's learning that practicing a little would be a good thing before you go live. So that's all to come this week.
Thanks, Blythe.
Yep.
The only other thing I'd add, if people have questions for Sean, just because he's the state rep or because he's in contact with these people and don't want to just sort of chime in asking on his Facebook page, they don't have Facebook, they're not interested in Facebook, his email is sean, which is S-H-A-W-N, because I know there's 15 ways you can spell it, sean.dooly@mahouse.gov, masshouse.gov.
And those that do have the opportunity, Sean's updates on Facebook are very comprehensive and pretty frequent and consistent as well, so they've been a great source for people to be able to get information at the state level. Chris, was there anything that you wanted to add or?
Nope. I think the only thing is that grant program is at 3%, so it's not free money, the $75,000 small business grant.
I didn't say it was free money.
No, I know you didn't, but I just was saying it is 3%.
Annual interest rate of 3%.
Not the best deal in the world, but it's still out there, which is great.
We did have one question from our remote participation. This is from Ms. Donna Jones. She asked, "Have you been using the Blackboard software Citizen Alert or Reverse 911 for announcements? I have not received any notices using these methods in months."
So I know that, I believe that the Board of Health did push out some by email. We haven't used it for phone alerts yet. We were saving that in case there was a more serious emergency to Norfolk that we needed to let them know about, but I'm glad that question came up because I would remind people, if you go to the button on our homepage, it says Citizen Alerts. That takes you to Blackboard Connect to sign up for those. And we are using that to push out emails of some of this information. And we're also pushing it to Facebook. Anything that comes up on our What's New section of our website homepage automatically goes to Facebook as well, so.
Thank you, and I think I'll just end with saying, you know, we've gotten a flurry of phone calls and messages and emails over the course of the last five days or so, and I understand that there's been a lot of uncertainty with the way that things have been working as we've been waiting to take our cues, both from the federal and state governments, as to how we best react to something like this. Please, if you have those questions, if you have those comments, continue to send them in because that's instrumental as we continue to build out our strategy for how we move forward here. It's also important to note that we're doing so with an abundance of caution, maybe even more so than is necessary in some situations, just because, you know, at the end of the day, we're never really going to know if we overreacted to these things, right? That we're never going to know that. What the bad thing would be was if we realized we underreacted and we see the negative impacts of that. So we're going to continue to err on the side of caution here and with the potential of overreacting. But please, if you do have questions, if you do have comments, if you have observations, things that are concerning to you, please reach out. We're more than happy to connect with you and get them addressed. Anything else? Nope, all right. So that will move us to our next item, which is our discussions. Correct? Our first item is to please discuss the revisions for the transfer station fees and charges.
So with us tonight is Barry, our interim DPW director, and Blair Crane, our superintendent. They have both, with their staff, been thinking a lot about how we operate the station, how it might be done differently. From a financial perspective, Todd and I have identified that, you know, we have not been covering, bringing the revenue that we've been budgeting each year. Last year, we were shy by almost $75,000, and we're also, it's an impact to the annual budget each year. And we're also, it's an impact to the annual budget each year because it costs us more than, than we're even budgeting in revenue to operate the station. And so since we haven't raised rates since FY12, I think, we felt it was important to bring this issue to you. They've got some, I think, very good ideas about how to do things differently and wanted to gauge, you take your pulse on that. If you feel comfortable, if we're heading in that right direction, we don't want you to make any decisions tonight. You might find that we think you should, we should charge more, or you think it's too much, or bags versus stickers. We want to take you through the PowerPoint that they put together and then have some discussion about it so we can determine whether we're on track with the budget. So with that, I'll turn it over to Barry.
Excellent. Thank you for having us in tonight. So to Blithe's point, you know, we've been looking at this diligently internally at the DPW. All of our staff have been active, participating, and sharing of ideas and coming up with different thoughts. So we'd like to present this to you to get your input, ultimately, you know, where we want to, the transfer station to go. We want to make it a money-making operation, and we want to keep it as a service to the residents. You know, this is an opportunity for us to discuss the good and the bad and look at what we present to you tonight. So first, we'll discuss the solid waste division, just give you a quick overview and overview the budget-revenue history. I'll take you through the proposed fee and, fee and operational changes that we're proposing and discuss with you the opportunity that we're looking at to convert our bag-sticker program to a trash-bag program. So currently, the solid waste division is partially self-supporting through various fees from collections, recyclables, and drop-offs that are submitted to the town to offset annual costs for operation and debt service. The current fee schedule returns on collections are not sufficient enough for the division to be self-supporting. Our goal at the DPW with our staff is to enhance the level of service provided to the residents while creating a more self-stating facility and overall division. A little general information about the transfer station, so we have three full-time staff that work there, two part-time staff. Overall, fees hadn't been raised in eight years. It looks like a couple of years ago, e-waste fees were adjusted to get us a little bit more revenue there. Our recycling market has been inclined for several years. Our revenues have been in decline. 1,100 out of 31 households in Norfolk utilize the transfer station. Some residents of the town use local contracted curbside pickup. Those rates range anywhere from $408 to $504 per year. Our proposed solid waste budget is $433,459, and our proposed revenue budget with looking at what we're implementing would be about $310. This is a little snapshot of our revenue history. I think, actually, we kind of showed this when we did the budget discussions. So you can see 14, we were about eight grand down, 15. You can see 17, 18, and 19, which is what I'm going to focus on. Those are the years that the recycling market has dropped, and our revenues have not been very profitable in the recycling. We're currently at 111.798 below. I'm expecting, it's tough to project with, with what's going on right now, we probably should project it to be kind of close to where we were last year. This chart below kind of shows you, this is 2017, 2018, and 2019. So paper was up, plastic was up, and our rigid plastic and glasses have been in decline. Out of our budget for 17, 11% of our revenues were from recycling. In 18, it was 14%. In 19, it was 12%. So revenues make up, I mean, excuse me, recycling makes up a portion of our revenues, and that's what we're looking at for that. Our strategy for this process was to take an in-depth look into the fees process and operations that currently exist at the transfer station and within the whole solid waste division. Our goal is to implement changes that would not only streamline our operations, but also increase revenues. So I broke this up into three different categories, and I'll walk you guys through our changes and the things that are going to remain the same. So operational changes for our decals. We took a hard look at that and felt we needed to increase the fees. We've also eliminated some of the nuances that we had that caused kind of a bit of a county nightmare. So we're no longer to provide prorating for a standard sticker, prorated for a senior sticker, or prorating for an additional decal. So all the prorating has been taken out of the program. We're still going to offer decal or mail-in online stickers, and that rate is now 75. For a decal in person, that proposed fee is 75. Senior decal, we went up $10 to 55. And the additionals, whether being purchased online or in person, went up from 5 to 20 to 10 to 20. We also, Blair had a great idea of changing the color of the decal. Instead of going for the white decal, now we have a colored decal so our staff can clearly see what is going on. There's been, you know, discussions where people were buying a prorated sticker and not paying for a full-price sticker and kind of circumventing the systems. So eliminating the prorated and having that colored decal, we'll be able to track that a little bit better. Currently, the decal sales are offered at the DPW online and the transfer station. So materials, we're hoping to see a large increase in our material sales. If I slide back a little bit. So we're actually working on a pad area adjacent to where the KP big speaker is. We want to set up material bins so the residents actually can see what we have to offer, make it easier for pickup, delivery, and hopefully increase our material sales there. I wanted to show you that. We've changed our daily chip charge from 50 to 85. Processed wood chips were once no cost, are now $5. Compost, we're proposing, that was once no cost, is $10. There was two classifications of screened loom, so we just kind of lumped that together. We're just calling loom-loom. We've added riverstone, which is a two-inch minus rock, well-worn rock that wasn't offered before. And we're offering clean fill. Some of the stuff we took out was different categories of loom, different categories of gravel. Really took a hard look at what people want, what we can supply, and what wasn't really working for us. We want to make this available to residents with decal only. And if contractors are interested in buying and purchasing from the DPW, you know, that's going to be an availability issue. They're going to have to call us. I don't want a contractor to come in and take in the 300 yards of loom that we have for residents. That's something that, you know, Blair will work day-to-day with the, with the transfer staff to make sure we have things available. We've also, we call it a small resident pickup, so we have residents that like to come in with a 30-gallon container, pick up wood chips, pick up compost. Before, those were free. We would like to charge $5 for that. So like I said, the material bins are being relocated to a more visible area of the transfer station to promote sales. This is being funded through a state grant, so we have a grant that's paying for the, it's going to be a large cement block area. And we had some funding left over from the transfer paving funds that we're going to use to utilize that, to accomplish that. We made a few changes to the recycling in our, in our container services. Bulk construction materials such as furniture and et cetera, and things like that have gone from $4 to $5. Before, we weren't charging for scrap metal and white goods. We were missing out on an opportunity there. We can actually get some revenue by bringing in some scrap goods to recycling, so we're charging for that. E-waste, that's holding the same, where we're actually currently working with a new e-waste vendor, so we're actually making a little headway there. Mattress and bog springs, tires, and things like that stay the same. Our container rentals, we took a hard look at this one. You know, we're offering a great service to the town, but I think we needed a little bit, to be a little bit more competitive to what, you know, other people are offering. So our rentals have gone up from $200 to $300. The rental extension per week has gone from 50 to 65. And our tipping fee per ton is going to stay the same. So basically what we're saying, so the, it happens, but not a whole lot. We do have people that get the container, are moving, leave out of town, don't pay us. So that $300 will include the tipping fee. So now we, now we can, are able to dump that container and not have to pay money out of pocket. One of the things we did change is our pickup service. So traditionally, it was available to residents from the DPW if they had mattresses or other large items that needed to go to the transfer station. We would go and pick it up. It was two DPW staff members going to a resident, picking up what they had. We just didn't see a lot of it, and we did it here and there, so we thought it was a service that we could possibly remove. And now we have our, our bag stickers and our trash-bag comparison. Our analysis of the current fees and processes and operations led us to realize that the current pay-as-you-throw program using bag stickers was not achieving its full potential revenue. Based on analysis and discussions with other municipalities, our recommendation is to change our current pay-as-you-throw program from bag stickers to trash bags. And here's a little comparison that I can take you through. One of the issues with the bag stickers was enforcement. It was difficult to see, you know, that little yellow sticker on a bag. One of the big issues we were having was equity. 75% of our, estimated 75% of our users were putting four or five small trash bags into one big trash bag and putting a sticker on that. So we were actually getting a lot of weight. We are paying to dispose of everything by weight. So we're getting a lot of material in our, in, you know, in these little bags that we're expecting with the bag sticker, we're getting a lot more weight that we're, we have to pay for to the, to the companies that we take it to. So our tipping fees were high. Today, right now, we're at $42,000 in tipping fees. So that's paying, the town paying to get rid of this waste. On average, 30,000 bag stickers are sold per year. It's about a $75,000 revenue to the town. So the town charges $250 per bag sticker. The vendors that are selling it get 10 cents. The town nets $2.40 on each sticker sold. So trash bags, why are we going to go to trash bags? Trash bags will be standardized. It's easier for us to enforce. We're going to have a color-coded trash bag for the town in Norfolk. We're playing with colors now. So our employees are going to see that bag, come in, we're going to know it's a town in Norfolk trash bag. All residents are going to use the same-sized bag. There is no more circumventing the system. There is no more putting four small bags in one giant yard waste bag and bringing that to the transfer station. So the bag size will be standard. Now we'll be able to pay by weight, not by volume, substantially reducing the tipping fees and increasing revenue. Our rough estimates is we probably will be increasing our tipping, our revenue fees by 50% by switching to the bags. Our overall estimates for bags, now this is tough because we're going, it's not a apples-to-apples scenario. We're going from bag stickers to bags. But Blair and I worked on some equations. We're thinking that 40,000 bags sold at 200 bags per case would net the town about $87,000 in revenue. That's just in the bag revenue, not taking into account what will be saving in their tipping fees, just also increasing the revenue there. So the trash bag formula, a case is sold at $500. The company that we were using, I'll get into that in a minute, deducts $65 for supplies and for services for each case sold. The town makes $435 per case. Oh, that got on order. Oh, that's why. So our proposed program, we'd like to charge the same price for the trash bags as we charge for the bag sticker. So people are accustomed to that $250. There'd be five trash bags per roll, so a roll would cost $1,250. We were looking to offer a bag sticker trade-in program. So people that already have bag stickers, however we figure out the process, they could come to the DPW, trade in their stickers, and receive bags. We're going with one bag size right now, the 33-gallon bag with a max weight of 35 pounds. We do have the opportunity, I think this is more of a trial period, getting our feet wet to see how it works. If this goes really well and it works, we have the opportunity to get different-sized bags. So residents that don't think they need the 30-gallon bag, might need a 15-gallon bag, that opportunity is there. So we've thought of that as well. Our goal would be to implement this by July 1 and get into that process. We've chosen to work with Waste Zero. 90% of the municipalities in Massachusetts work with Waste Zero and programs like this. They're on the state mid-list. And they offered several things that were very attractive to us. We don't have to store the bags at the DPW. They take care of it all. The, Waste Zero works directly with the vendors and with the town. The town doesn't have to do anything. Vendor needs bags, they call Waste Zero. Waste Zero delivers the bags. The town needs bags, we call Waste Zero, they deliver the bags. They handle all the billing, accounts receivable, bookkeeping, and logistics. So it's one less headache that the town has to worry about. This is kind of a comparison of what our revenues could be projected to be. On the left-hand side, we have our 2019 decal and bag sticker rates. We did about 1,429 sticker sales for the revenue of about $57,000. 30,000 bag stickers was about 72, so we made about $129,000. With our projected decal increases, our bag revenue, and a rough estimate on what we think we might be able to do by increasing our material sales, we're looking about $191,000 estimate, giving us an extra $60,000 as compared to last year. I did do a four-year average on this, and I did take a little bit of a 5% decrease in the revenue of the stickers, just not knowing, you know, how it's, how it's going to, how the residents of town are going to take it. That'd be the end of it. Questions? Thoughts?
One thing I'd just like to add, we thought about, if you're paying, wanted to compare what it would cost you if you wanted to change the curbside service because, or versus to stay with us. I was doing some quick math on my phone. If someone bought two bags, put two bags a week at the transfer station with these new system and paid the $75 fee, that works out to $325 a month, a year, sorry. So at the end of the day, it was still more cost-effective than curbside, but of course, you have to choose to bring it to us rather than have it picked up at the end of your driveway. And you would have some savings yourself because if you've been out buying bags yourself to put it in, to bring to us, now you're only going to buy the bag you, you know, we sold you. How you put it in there, how you stuff that bag is something you'll have to decide at home. But perhaps people are cost-avoiding the bags they were buying somewhere else and using ours instead. So I just offer that as information.
How many households do we have in Norfolk? Do you know roughly?
3,100.
3,100. 3,100 households?
Yes.
I think you said 1,300.
1400.
Did you say 1,300 stickers?
1,100, 1,100 residents participate in the program out of the 3,100 households.
About a third.
About a third.
So about a third of the people in town. And yeah, how many bags did you say you expected to sell?
We sell, on an average, our four-year average is 30,000 per year.
30,000.
30,000 bag stickers. Equating that to bags is about 40,000 bags. And that's, that's basically, we're, we're looking at this as getting the program going. I think our rough estimates were closer to 45,000, 50,000 bags per year. But, no, we have to work with Waste Zero at a goal and start the process.
I think, Blair, you might have some thoughts. You've been through a transfer station change like this at your last community, so maybe you've got some insights you can share.
If you could just grab a microphone, Blair. Thank you.
Me want to wipe it first. Okay.
Is there another one?
But you're already holding it, so. You used some hand sanitizer when he was done.
He's already doomed.
There we go. So I have been through this, and it's, nobody particularly likes change. It is, it is a difficult endeavor to take. But it's not, it is ascertainable to be able to do that. We can, we can actually implement this in the next couple of months and make it go well and be successful at doing so. The issue that, you know, as Barry was alluding to, that essentially the problem we have here is volume versus weight. And that's, over the years, that's where that's, that's come from. And at this point, based on observations from myself, this isn't the only town that's ever been that way. Majority of towns in the, excuse me, in the Commonwealth have gone the same route for that reason. When I, my previous employer, where I was at, had done stickers at one time and had made this jump years ago, and it was successful in doing that. So I, I think it's a proven method to close the gap. I'm not sure that it gets you totally out of the red, but I think it does make that a little easier, a little more palatable to, to take.
On the pay by, I guess I'm getting a little confused. Pay by weight, not volume. How does that work? Are the bags going to be weighed when you- How does that work? Are the bags going to be weighed when you bring them?
The, the bags are actually engineered so that they won't take any more than forty pounds.
Okay.
They are labeled, there, there is a label on them that, uh, that we can put on there that does state, uh, no more than twenty-five pounds per bag. Uh, they are engineered at forty pounds for the, essentially for the bottom to come out of them.
So does somebody count them? I mean, how do you, when you say by weight, is?
Oh, no, the, each, each bag itself is designed, when it's engineered, to only, to only hold forty pounds.
Yeah.
So the idea is if you're filling up that, if you fill up that bag over forty pounds, it's going to blow apart on you. So there is, there is no physically, we're not weighing.
Okay.
We know this bag could hold X as opposed to, you know, that person putting four trash bags into that yard waste bag, which could be a hundred pounds. So we're, we have a better, better way to judge the weight of that bag.
We find now that people are putting three or four bags into a, a massive eighty-gallon landscape bag, putting a two-dollar-and-fifty-cent sticker on it. Uh, and, and they are within the rules that we currently have to do so. But you're back to the volume versus weight problem.
And if you have a, you know, a bright orange bag, it's a lot easier for staff, especially on a busy Saturday, to make, be able to keep an eye on that there's only Norfolk bags going in, not to a plain black trash bag. And so if they have to interact with someone, say, hey, that's not the kind of bags you need to have, you know, it's just, it's a little easier to make sure, again, the system stays honest.
Yeah, the whole, the whole goal of this was to streamline, look at ways to streamline the process. And we, we're changing the decal color, um, just making things easier on the staff so they can point out and say, hey, that doesn't belong here. Uh, and, and also in, in increasing our revenue. If we're paying more to, to get rid of what we have and not taking it less, we're going to be upside down.
Can you go back to the services you're offering?
Uh, any particular one, or?
It wasn't this one. It's the one where you, uh, we'll go back to that, you're the ones you said.
Yep.
Uh, resident pickup or delivery. So how are we going to, like wood chips? Is it five dollars per cubic yard delivered?
It's going to be.
Is there going to be a difference between pickup versus delivery?
Same price for pickup or delivery. You're just not going to have to pay that delivery charge. So it's eighty, it's eighty-five dollars plus the five dollars per cubic yard for delivery. You come to the DPW for a pickup, it's five dollars a cubic yard.
Or if we deliver it, it's five dollars.
Plus the, plus the delivery fee.
Plus the delivery fee of eighty-five.
Okay, and what is the delivery fee?
Eighty-five. It went from fifty dollars.
Am I missing it?
It's at the top.
Yeah, uh, it's right here, sorry. It went from fifty to eighty-five. So one of the things that was interesting, it came out of, when we did the analysis for the, for the, the new roll-off truck, right? So an employee is about sixty dollars an hour. So at fifty dollars an hour, we're losing money. At eighty-five, we're making a little bit money. And if I have two guys out there, it's kind of offsetting. So we kind of used some of the information we found, doing some past analysis to help us make these numbers now.
And we also wanted to make sure that we were, um, more cost-conscious than someone calling a contractor. It'll cost you less to buy it from us. Um, we want people to have that as an opportunity, but we don't want to lose as much money as we've been losing. Um, was, was part of our argument. We certainly could charge more, but we were sensitive to not wanting to jump so much, at least in the first year, that people decided not to, to use us anymore because that would be a negative outcome.
Because with the compost and the screen and loom, there is a cost on our end to process that, to maintain it. So in essence, you know, we're, we're doing it, we're giving away, which is great, but you know, there's an opportunity for us to make a little money there.
Yeah.
But we also felt that if you wanted access to what we offer, then you had to buy a decal, whether you're just coming to buy these things from us, or you're also choosing trash and recycling.
Now, most roll-off companies charge a fee of up to so many tons, included in their base price.
Yeah.
Which, you know, if you look at them over the years, I say, they've sort of proven track record. So why are we doing, not doing that if we're going to offer this service? It doesn't make much sense.
That's a great question, and that's why we're presenting it to you.
Yeah, I think we want to.
I mean, that, I mean, that's a service that, you know, under your direction, we can provide to, to the residents at a discount. Do we want to be more competitive with our pricing? You know, I mean, that's the stuff we wanted to discuss with you guys.
Yeah, that would be one of those things I would look at, because I think, just what you said, some people move, and typically these companies charge, they charge you for the dumpster, then they send you a bill.
It's been few and far between.
You're not going to find them.
No, right. But we've had this discussion, and I mean, this is the idea of, you know, of us presenting it to you so we can have this, this group dialogue and see where we want to go with it. You know, you might say some of the fees are too high. Can we lower them? You know, we're prepared to go back and kind of do that analysis to see, to see what will be.
I mean, I think you approached it the right way. You went through a P and L analysis by hitting all the high points of price elasticity, inventory management reduction, loss prevention measures with the bags versus the stickers. The one thing that I saw was missing was competitive analysis. I see you built in a five percent reduction.
Yeah.
Uh, with stickers going to bags, but did you look at any other kind of comp analysis from similar kind of operations?
So we did look, um, so I didn't put it, because there was a lot of information regarding that. There's not a lot of towns in our area that operate a transfer station and do the bags. Um, there's a lot of curbside. On the bag cost side, we are a little high. Everywhere, everybody else is one fifty to two dollars. Uh, but we want, we felt that the bag stickers were already two fifty. Uh, if we're going to do that kind of trade, it would set the program, keep it the same. So I mean, again, that's a discussion that's part of the analysis we can look at. I mean, they range anywhere from a dollar seventy-five to a dollar twenty-five, five twenty-five for, well, here's a good one. Ashley has a curbside pickup, so they'd offer the same five bags, but it's five twenty-five for fourteen gallon, and then they have a thirty-three gallon option, uh, for five bags for nine dollars. So I mean, there is that window in there, but we felt if we're going to take those bag stickers in, we don't want to lose money. We kind of want to do that, that offset. And I mean, one of these things too is, is we're, we're getting it off the ground now. Um, you know, is there room in the future to look, hey, if our, our revenues on our materials go through the roof, maybe there's an option to lower the bag. I just, we just don't know. I mean, there's some of that stuff in there, we just don't know yet.
And I imagine it's not easy to get everybody to apples-to-apples either. There's a lot of components.
Yeah, that was, that was a tough thing, yeah.
And I think that part of that also was that, when we actually looked at this, it was based on the trend of the deficit that we're carrying. Year in, year out, it is headed in the wrong direction. Uh, you can blame the, the recycling market. There's, there's a number of factors there. But I think that we're not looking, you know, we've said a few times here, making money. We're not really making money. We're just trying to close that gap to a degree. I, I'm not sure that with the recycling market continuing to go down, if it would ever be in the black. I think it will always be in the red to some degree, but it's the amount of exposure that you carry.
And so right now, um, we have as a revenue in the budget, three hundred thousand dollars. We lowered it from three twenty-five. And that's if, if this goes forward, we, you know, guessing.
Three-ten, yeah.
Three-ten, but right now we've budgeted three hundred.
Can you go to that screen again? It shows that.
And so we're just, let's say, I, I think what we're looking for is, do you feel like we're heading in the right direction with these? Does anything seem very concerning that you would want us to relook at?
I want to go to the screen that shows where we are today, with the red. That's the screen, yeah. Is that the screen that you're referring to? My fear is the two forty-four is going to become three fifty-six plus, isn't it? Regardless, because of your, so, but yet the revenue side probably will not approach the two fifty-six. So I'm, I'm seeing a much larger deficit for this year.
Again, I, I was a little bit more optimistic. Until, until we're doing, dealing with what we're dealing with right now. Now, we're making some changes at the transfer station where we're not taking in certain things right now. Maybe we pick up those revenues on the backside. I, I just don't know how it's going to shake out.
Concerned with that. I think that number may be too low. That loss is going to be much larger this year.
It possibly will. I mean, this is unprecedented times, but we're trying to figure out how we turn it around without making it so expensive that people choose not to use it anymore, because we have a certain investment in it anyway.
I, I don't think our, I think our loss is going to be close, because there's certain things like e-waste. We're, we actually, we're making good revenue on e-waste this year as compared to past years. Um, I, again, I think the whole thing's in flux and my, my gut feeling is I think we're going to be closer to last year than a huge hole. I mean, hopefully we get the, even if we don't implement all the raises and anything, we'll have the materials up and running. You know, that's a source of revenue that hasn't been really strong for the last few years. Um, so there's a lot of things that we're, we're going to get going.
Here's another thing maybe to look at, and I don't know if it was Kevin leading to it, is what about if we got rid of the whole trash part of it and just kept the services, the roll-offs, the, the material we're going to offer? And just got rid of the trash pickup and every, because two-thirds of the town is already obviously has trash pickup. Only one-third is using the dump for that, and you could actually cut down a lot of your labor costs.
We're actually trending, right now, we're trending, we're picking up more. So the way the decal sales are going, our decal sales don't go until, I believe it's May first is the big day when they're all released. But right now, we're, our decal sales are trending higher than they've been the last few years. So it looks like a lot of the people that were with the private companies, they raised their fees, so now they're coming back to the town side.
There's recently some issues with a certain company with pickups. A lot of people transitioned from there. Maybe some people did some internal cost analysis and said it wasn't really of benefit.
Yeah, ours would still be cheaper than the privates. Um, you know, on the simply, my simple math of two bags a week. I don't know if that's right for every family, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially right.
I'm saying, even if.
Don't have kids, okay?
Even if it's cheaper and the cost is, and the cost is still more, is costing us too much money, you know, do we, do we eliminate it completely and just eliminate that, that part of the equation?
Right, because right now it's, it's costing every taxpayer, whether they use it or not, some amount of money.
And two-thirds aren't even using it.
Oh, no, Chris, you're, I mean, you're right. I mean, this is the hard look that we're looking at it. You know, if the recommendation is, you know, we want to get out of that business, and then, and that's what we have to look at. You know, the idea is we're presenting all this and, you know, the discussion is here.
Maybe look at those numbers too, what it costs to get rid of the trash part of it. I guess that's what we call it, the trash part of it, and keep all the other services. Because I mean, I, I use the, I use the brush. It's great to be able to take brush to the dump and drop it off.
Yeah.
You know, I think a lot of other people do, and that's actually free.
But, but that's actually a cost for us, because we have to have the chip grinders to come in. See, that's the stuff that people didn't realize. It's great that you bring the brush, but we have to flip it, roll it. I get to bring in a grinder, they grind it up the wood chips. So there's, there's been costs going on that. I, I don't think everybody was really akin to what's going on.
That was my next thing. I know in Connecticut, they charge you, you actually buy a separate sticker for like a pickup truck. So that when you drop off brush, they collect a fee for that. Regardless of how many times you go, you pay a fee for your pickup truck to go into the dump. Doing similar to what I do, taking brush in there. So maybe that's something we add to this equation is, you know, a sticker for pickup trucks and things that they can dump it off. And I can get you, I think Norwalk, Connecticut has a pretty good model, and they do that for, uh, for their pickup trucks and things, which might help.
And I think leaves would be an addition to that as well. Leaves, we get a lot of leaves in the fall, obviously. And there's a cost with flipping, rolling those piles and, and dealing with that as well, so.
And I'm sure the cost is far away what we get in revenue, because it does take a lot to make that mulch. It's great, but it does cost a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty much ten thousand dollars every time we need the grinder to come in, um, to grind that up.
I would be a little uncomfortable about stopping trash immediately for July. I think it's something that, you know, maybe we look at, we, we implement some of these things, maybe not exactly like this, but close to it, and we see how it goes, and we see if we're trending in the right direction, or maybe we need to get out of the business. We have a, take a longer view.
Yeah, I mean, this will tell us. And right now too, it's, you know, we, we've talked to all the, all of our vendors that are taking our recycling. Uh, you know, the big what-if, if they stop taking it, how long can we run? Um, if we go single stream, we're looking at about twenty-one days. Uh, now we're just taking in, you know, no more cycle, no more nothing. We're using all the bins we have over there, you know. You know, Blair and I, our business is, is, is think the worst and plan for the worst, and we're hoping that everything works out. But we're, I mean, we've already looked at that, and we're, we're down the road with that. So we hope it doesn't go that way, but, you know, it could. So I mean, this is, yeah, I mean, is it the perfect time to be talking about this stuff? But no, but it's, it's an opportunity for us to open up the conversation.
So what I hear you saying is look at the contract, look at the rental of, of units a little harder. Um, I heard that from Chris. Look at perhaps a sticker for some type of a cost to drop off pickup trucks, if you will, of brush leaves or whatever it is.
Trailers pickup trucks, people who use those.
In order to get this running, up and running, and all that needs to happen, especially with bags, we really need to start as soon as possible. So we would be looking for you to give us approval, ideally at the first meeting in April, which is three weeks from now.
Our, our internal date deadline to get this up and running for July one would be June. Uh, we have to work with Waste Zero and contacting vendors, getting them online to be able to sell bags. You know, what we're going to do with the DPW. So there's a little legwork on the backend to get this up and running.
So if you have any other thoughts after, if you don't have them tonight, that you could get to us so we can adjust what we're, what we're looking at and bring you a comprehensive package, that would be great.
I would like to know, I understand you can't do it for this year's budget, but I, to Chris's point, I think I'd be, I'd be interested to know what it costs us to, because I see the overall budget, right?
Yeah.
But what of this expense is trash removal? What of this expense is the, um, is recyclables, right?
Yeah, we could actually, we could actually pull that together this week for you. So we, we track everything.
Break it, just, let me finish so I don't forget. Just break it all down. This is why this costs, this is what this costs, this is what this costs. So then we can look and see, well, that's a lot of money and, and we're running in the red. And so when, at least for this year's budget, when people come up to us, which they will, and, and have editorials that are perhaps inflected with some anger about the increase in the bag cost and so forth, the response can be, the two-thirds of the town who are doing curbside also pay taxes and are subsidizing you, we need you to help too. And if you don't want to help, that's fine, because next year we can make it go away. Not that that's how we would handle it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that would be an option that would be available to us if we had the information and someone were sassing us.
I, I was toying with that idea when I was putting that presentation together, but I didn't want to overload you with, with, with a lot of information. So, um, the way, we, we, we actually track everything by all the vendors that we go to. We know the tonnage and everything. Um, so I'll probably keep that same seventeen, eighteen, nineteen scenario. Uh, it's easier to look at, and we can pull that together.
And don't get me wrong, I love the dump.
Transfer station.
Well, okay, whatever, but, um, I just, I'm, I come from a long line of people who are dump people, transfer station people, whatever, where you go and use the swap, and it's an important part of the, the community, but if you're hemorrhaging money.
It's an opportunity.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, it's an opportunity, so we have to.
It sounds like we're open to fee changes. We'll come, we'll refine them. Some will bring that back to you in, at one of the meetings in April.
Yeah, we'll dial in those numbers for you. That's not a problem.
Good job, guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Barry. Thank you, Blair. Appreciate it.
Todd, did you have anything you wanted to add? I didn't want to leave you out of the conversation.
I've covered it all.
Okay.
All right, so our next discussion item is to please discuss revisions to insurance premium cost share for retiree health insurance.
Yes, so, um, since, for, for decades, the town, decades ago, and I, I can look up the date, the town meeting accepted it. Um, but the town accepted a section of chapter thirty-two B that allowed for, for it to provide retiree health insurance. I think we've talked about this as part of the OPEB conversation. And I don't know prior to twenty-seventeen what the cost share was, but I can tell you, and it's in your packet, that, um, the board adopted and updated their policy on this for retirees in January of, of twenty-seventeen to, uh, confirm that they would pay the same percentage for retiree health insurance as they do for active employees. And as I think you all know, active employees, we have to negotiate with all of our unions for that. Retiree, um, folks, we, we do not. And so in twenty, uh, twenty-twelve, the state changed the law on, on retiree, on, on health insurance overall. Um, and at that time, they put in place a series of moratoriums where you could not change the cost share that you had uh, with your retirees. Those have, um, have ended, and there is a, so there's an open, an opportunity, if you want to call it that, perhaps not, to make this change. Um, the state law that we did approve required that a minimum towns pay fifty percent of the cost. And so what happens is if you have someone who's worked for the town for some number of years, and they become pension-eligible, they've worked at least ten years, depending on when they retire, they're either fifty-five or sixty years old, they are eligible to switch to, to stay on the town's health insurance plans uh, through the rest of their life, and if they have a spouse, that person as well. Um, and they sign up for different types of plans depending on how they're eligible. Some need to stay on the town's regular plan because they're not eligible for Medicare or they're under age sixty-five. And those, and others, and it's, and the majority of them um, who are over sixty-five and are Medicare-eligible, switch to what's called a, I say, a Medicare supplement program. Those are less expensive. All told, we have right today, a hundred and thirty-seven people who are receiving this benefit today. I can't tell you whether they're a hundred and thirty-seven employees or a hundred and thirty-seven people, simply because when you switch to a Medicare plan, if, if someone was to retire, Joe, Joe Smith, and Joe is married, and they're both Medicare-eligible, Joe. and they're both Medicare eligible, Joe and his spouse each have their own individual Medigap plan, so, um, I just want to point out that that's, that's, it's not necessarily employees. So today, the town, um, covers in its annual operating budget, all of those costs. Um, and so as we looked at the budget this year, we said, gee, what ways can we adjust it? We identified that there is an opportunity for the town to, um, reduce its share from 65% to something down as low as 50. Um, and that if, if the board was prepared to make a change to 50%, um, that we could reduce the FY21 budget by $120,000. So there's two reasons why that's good for the town. Uh, the first is it simply lowers our cost this year, coming up the year after, the year after, the year after. Um, and when the next actuarial evaluation is done, um, because we are paying a lower percentage, that valuation of our OPEB cost will also go down. I am not an actuary, so I can't say to you what that would mean, but if it's 26 million today, it's going to be something less. But to be fair, it also is important to point out what it means for retirees. People retired, and they expected to pay a certain percentage. So if we change it, that does have an impact on them. And so we included in your packet, um, there is a spreadsheet that shows you, uh, the math of how many individual plans we have, and a retiree on, on one of those medics plans right now, they're paying 35% of the cost, that's just under $114, and if they had to pay 50%, they'd now pay $162 per month. Um, and so their, their cost for a year would be $585 more dollars. Then we also listed the, the much smaller group of people who are, for different reasons, on family, two-person or single plans. Um, and so there are four people on family plans, their cost would be the most significant, that's $4,300 at today's costs. Um, also thought it was important to include for you, we did, grabbed a survey from another community and added some, reached out to our neighbors. Um, I haven't exactly counted them up, but I'd say more than half are, which are, are at 50/50, some are higher. Um, what I hear from my peeps in the municipal world is that towns are, are looking at this, and if they haven't changed, they're thinking very strongly of it. One person, and this is only anecdotal, said to me, Cape towns are, are changing it. They're just, it's their way that they can really get a control of their costs. Um, but it comes as, as a, as a, an expense for those folks who are already retired. Um, we also checked in with town council, and his email is in here as well, which he's basically saying, we, we did not accept the section of, uh, we did accept the section of law that, you know, allowed us to charge 50%, but not the one that allowed us to charge more. And I don't know, I wasn't here, we should have accepted that to allow us to, to pay more.
Pay more, yeah.
We didn't, I can't tell you why. Um, and his advice is we can change it, and that we would certainly notify retirees of the change. So this is a significant part of how we've planned to balance the budget, but we, we were asking you to look at it tonight and give us kind of your read on this, so we can think about what we do going forward.
Can I, um, just say that my knee jerk reaction, and it probably is more global than just regarding this, like, it's not just because you found a good cost saver, like, I like that you're thinking creatively, but I have a real concern about people, and I understand they may not have bargained for this, but the, the retroactivity of it troubles me, that there's people who went into retirement knowing that the town was doing this and, and are now retired. And I would feel totally comfortable saying prospectively, everybody from tomorrow on, you, you know, money, the town's trying to save money, um, we need to change, so if you need to get ducks in a row for retiring and, and so forth for the future, but I just am troubled by the idea of saying to folks who have already retired and are reliant upon it, even if they're worth, have a significant other sources of income and aren't on a fixed income, that just, that piece sort of doesn't sit well. And I certainly, I can, as I'm saying it, I can hear the people who are saying, well, I'm 18 years in, and in two years I'm going to retire, and I shouldn't have to, you know, but at some point you have to hit the bright line. I'm comfortable with the bright line being the people who have already moved on to the next phase of their life and are fully retired. I just haven't, that, I struggle with that.
I would also offer, um, that you can change it to something, you don't have to change it just to 50.
Right, no, no, I understand.
If you wanted to entertain some, you could do something different. I'm just telling you that if you went to the, which, the most, the extreme of 50%, this is what it means in the budget.
No, I, I hear you. I, I saw that. I just, just telling you my thought.
I mean, I'm a big competitive analysis guy, right? I like to see what other communities are doing, see how we fit into that, make sure that we're in line with like communities that are closest to us. This is great that you got the full scale of half of the towns.
I think it's 137.
Yeah. Uh, but if you look at the ones that are most closely related to us, Medway, Dover, Millis, Plainville, Foxborough, Bellingham, and Medfield, all at 50. Um, Norfolk at 65 currently. Franklin, the only one that's listed as higher at 68, and the only one we're missing is Walpole, which says varies.
Varies.
Um, so...
Depending on the hire date.
Right, so I don't know how that plays into it, but, I mean, clearly, we are on the far upper end of that.
Mm-hmm.
I get Cici's point, though, where you draw that line.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's a tough conversation to have, and clearly, the benefit, uh, from a financial standpoint comes from implementing it retroactively. If we implemented it from today on, we're not going to see the value in that, or at least from a profit and loss standpoint.
For this year.
For...
For any year.
For years to come.
Well, for next year, if there's someone who's retiring next year.
Well, it's the people who pass on, once they pass, then they, the, the 35 percenters drop off and, you know, something in 50 percenters...
Right, by attrition, yep.
Yeah.
Now we're going down really dark roads.
I'm sorry. Well, because, as you know, if someone, if Joe Smith and his wife, and Joe Smith retires, and we're, and we're covering part of his health insurance, then he's replaced by Mary Smith, Mary Jones, sorry, and she's the new employee that replaced him, now we have, we're carrying both. And that's where the, the number becomes so large for OPEB.
Yeah. I mean, I, I struggle greatly with the commitment that was made to people while they were here and after they left, and then changing that after the fact. But at the same time, I feel like collectively, we are all invested in the future of the town and how we perform the services we can provide. Uh, so I think those decisions have to be made with that global community in mind, not just the ones who are here day to day living it. Chris, what do you think?
Yep, I just, a couple of clarifications. You know, eligible retired employee, so I worked 30 years for Norfolk on the DPW, so I'm 50 years old, started at 20. Um, I, I would be getting, I would, and I'm not retired, but I go take another job somewhere, and I like their health insurance. So I say, I'm going to stay on Norfolk's health insurance. They're really not retired. So can I do that?
Well, that has been another issue that, that Scott Bragdon has pointed out to me, that the town hasn't been consistent with someone who, um, worked those 30 years, left here, maybe their spouse had better insurance, and they chose, they, and then the job they went to didn't have great, they liked, they went on their spouses, um, so they retired from here, and they didn't take our plan, and then a couple of years later, maybe that spouse retired from that job, and they say, hey, I'd be way better off if I go back to Norfolk and claim my health insurance, and they were let back on the plan. One thing I would think, I think we really need to tighten up, is that if you retire from here, you're either choosing our plan, or you're not choosing our plan, and if you don't choose our plan, that's fine, no hard feelings, but you don't get to come back later and choose it.
My concern is, are they retired? If I go get another job...
If they've met the state's requirements to be pension eligible, i.e.
30 years.
Worked 30 years and age 55 or 60, depending on when they were hired.
Yeah.
They are pension eligible, doesn't mean if they go work for BJ's...
They can still take our insurance.
They take our insurance.
Which is sort of crazy. We should, we can't change that law, because that seems very bizarre.
Statute, right?
It's a statute, it's state law.
It's just...
It is.
You gotta, you gotta talk to your legislator.
All right, so now, it's crazy. I'll talk to Sean. The next thing is, can we adjust this by age? In other words, can we say if you're 68 and older?
We'll leave it at 68.
We're going to leave it at 65. Anybody 68 and younger, we're going to drop to 50. Can we do this by age? Because there are a lot of people...
That's an interesting way of putting it.
Who served the town back in the days, you know, when the fire chief, police chief didn't make a great deal of money, and they were the people who built up Norfolk. And they did it because, the same reason people got into municipal government, pension, good health insurance.
All right.
We're, we're, we're actually penalizing those people.
I get it.
So I would say, can we do this with an, can we put some age parameters in this, that if you're 60 and older, the stage is 65, anybody less, we, we do what Cici talked about, is we implement that, as to, hey, as of today, you're going to, you only get 50.
Without talking to council, I'm going to say it's probably possible, only because I know from our survey that other communities have set different parameters, but I definitely want to check. I think the other thing is that, I'm not, say you decide you wanted to go to 50%, just as an example, that may cause some people to say, you know, I can go out in the marketplace and I can buy a more competitive plan than it's now going to cost me in Norfolk, and they may choose to leave our plan, and that...
Is another saving.
Is another savings, it's a benefit to the town, if they can find something that's better for their family than what we offer anymore, and you make that also a one-way door.
Yeah. I just don't want to, I, as both have pointed out, we just, I think it would be, and I actually thought of this when we first saw it, and I went, oh, boy, here comes a backlash. And then you didn't hear it, but then suddenly when people had time, obviously because people at home started reading what's going on, I started getting a lot of calls from people who were very concerned about the, what about me? You know, I've been here for 40, 50 years, serving the community, and now you're going to, now you're going to, you're going to do it to me? So I think that's what we've got to be concerned with. But I think if we could put an age restriction there, I think it softens the blow, we get a little bit of the benefit, but we don't hurt those people who have really been serving the town for a long time.
So, just so I can understand better, what you're proposing would be that we put an age cap on a fixed percentage, and then after you cross that threshold, it goes to a lower percentage? Or is this just strictly a line in the sand right now?
I think it's a line in the sand for the folks who've already hit that age, and then they're grandfathered in.
Got it.
Right.
Okay, yep.
But, but, but if they're not grandfathered from the day we do it, then everyone else pays a different amount.
Everyone pays a different amount, a lower amount from there on out.
And then we would take care of some of the elder people who have been in the system, who have counted on this, and are probably the ones most susceptible to this being a, a financial burden on them.
I just didn't understand, if you intended for everybody to eventually hit that threshold, you're just saying where we are right now today.
Got it, okay.
That makes sense to me as well.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I just, we'll have to, if we're going to do something different, then we'll have to adjust our overall budget, because it's part of the reductions that we put together.
I mean, it's the right idea, way to find savings, which is fantastic. It's just one of those ones that we...
Well, I mean, I care, I care very much about what it means to retirees, I also care very much what it means to all our residents today and people we haven't met yet, who have employees...
Well, and the town employees who are currently, right, I mean...
Well, just the ability of our taxpayers who don't, many don't have this benefit, and if they don't work in the public sector, are still paying for this and all the, you know, the OPEB liability in the future.
Right.
And so what does that mean to them? I'm just, I'm not trying to take a side here, I'm just trying to point out all this, all the, all the viewpoints that...
And it's a, and it's a benefit. I mean, I hate to say this, and I know people don't like to hear it, if you're a municipal employee, this is a big benefit. You don't see this in the private sector.
Right, and that's why...
So when we negotiate, we should really be conscious of these things. I mean, we should almost have a checklist. Try to get that in the public sec, in the private sector, you won't see it. So don't take it for granted, that you're getting this 65% while you work for us. And I know it's competitive across the municipal world.
Right.
But that's the same, you know, nothing ever changes unless someone puts a stake in the sand and says, we're going to change it. So if everybody's going about the, you know, it's like the 3% a year, everybody gives 3% a year, 3% a year, 3% a year, until someone says, stop, it doesn't happen.
Well, it's a negotiation every three years with each union, and we have to decide, you as a board, you know, you're going to give us direction on where you want to go, and if it's changing something like that, we have to decide what we're willing to trade off to get that.
Right.
I mean, I think, I actually think the town did make good strides in this area for active employees, but it chose to take a different path with retirees.
Ballparking here, because I know you don't have the numbers in front of you.
I got, I got my expert here.
Age 68 and older, how, what percentage is that, 137?
I have no idea how...
It's got to be the vast majority, right?
Probably going to be a high number.
Yeah. Okay, I was just trying to gauge what the impact would be to the forecast.
I, I purposely not learned any of the details of the people.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking at this super strictly from the, a different level.
But we can get that data.
Yeah, do you have an age in mind that you'd like us to run numbers on?
I'd want to see the, the plot of what it looks like, what all the ages are, and then we can probably assess at that point to see where our capture would be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll just give you numbers, we'll not give you any people's information.
Appreciate that.
So that's, that's the overview of all that.
Very good. Thank you. And again, as Cici said, thank you for the creative eye that you're taking and looking and saving money.
Good under every rock.
Thank you. Um, all right, so we're on to action items now. We've already approved water rates. Next, please consider determining the amount of the FY21 operating budget proposed at town meeting.
So let me get to that section of...
We just killed it.
Back to the drawing board.
So, with what we've just talked about, with transfer station fees and, um, the, um, retiree benefit, we would, um, in your, in your package is a new copy of the whole budget, uh, thank you, Todd, um, and we did, and there is also a list of adjustments that we made.
Is that at the end?
It's at the end. Uh, we raised various revenues, uh, line, line items that in total are adjusted upwards by eighty, almost $88,000. Um, the, we increased the penalties and interest on taxes a little bit, we increased, we lowered transfer station revenue 25,000, increased other departmental, other departmental revenue and licenses and permits each by 25,000, ambulance receipts by 55,000, and reduced free cash by 2,441. Um, and then we also trimmed various expenses, um, and those are listed 1 through 12. Um, I think the more significant ones are, uh, we took out the, a part-time IT person, which this week is challenging us. Um, we adjusted, uh, the solar power generation number, with simple transfer from town clerk's office to a town administrator, uh, an amount to cover public records work. We reduced police station salaries 20,000, building department salaries 13,000, that's taking out the mechanical inspector, um, continuing to have staff do that themselves. We reduced the animal control budget by 5,000, and we leave it up to the chief how he, how he broke that down, whether it's overtime or expenses. The regional dispatch assessment has changed slightly, and the, we made significant changes in DPW administration. Uh, we got direction from the board that we'd like to see a, perhaps a vacant management position removed. We've done that, um, but we have adjusted that because we, um, feel that it's critically But we have adjusted that because we feel that it's critically important to have some money in expenses to be able to hire somebody to do various roadwork inspections, whether it's roadwork we're doing or subdivisions that are being built that we need to oversee on some level to make sure they're being built to our standards. We reduced the DPW fuel line. The most significant is what we just talked about, retiree health insurance changes. And we've had to increase non-exempt debt, non-exempt debt service by $30,000 to account for the school roof, the final numbers on that. The town meeting action we took last fall to borrow money for the roll-off truck and the Lake Street roadwork. And offsetting both of those, Todd has talked to our financial advisor and believes we can do another small refunding of old debt, which will help.
That refunding is kind of in flux, talking with her.
You can use this one or?
That particular refunding that I identified with our financial advisor, which would save us over the life of the remainder of the loan or the bonds would be 10 years, would equate to about $200,000 in savings. But with the markets where they are, and we don't really know where they are, she's kind of giving us a hold our horses on that aspect. But as far as the ban, which is the bond anticipation note for the school roof and the truck and the roadway, we continue to go forward with that to get us through because I don't want to have a deficit in those accounts for the year end. So we would accomplish that. But she and I are going to regroup next week, figure out where we are with the potential refunding. Refunding is on a bond that we have, which is with the school, two portions, one component's within side, the debt budget that we pay and the other is exempt. So again, totaling those two would provide us savings of $200,000 over the next 10 years. And that was given at the market rates a couple of weeks back. Like I said, I'll touch base with her probably mid, middle of next week to see where we're at.
The two things that we still are, that we still don't have a absolute knowledge of are where our fellow communities are on the King Philip regional budget. I mean, this is, the budget that we're carrying is affordable for us. I don't know what it is for them, and I don't know what will happen with that. And their town meetings aren't until early June anyway. And then the, we are sending out a letter to all of our employees who have health insurance now in their next, with their next paycheck to ask them to let us know if they can, where we, their interest in the opt-out health insurance plan. And hopefully we'll see some savings from that. Don't know yet. So that's really, that's where we're at. So we felt it was important. So right, overall, if this was all to happen the way we've designed it now, we would be to 2.33% budget increase, which is a reduction from what you saw last week.
Which was like, what, 2.8?
2.81.
2.81, yeah. So.
Kevin, you'll like this, and I do too, the, where you, the comparative analysis, that right there, you can see where we were.
That made me very happy. Thank you, Todd.
I knew it would.
So, yeah, I think, I mean, I think our budget is responsible and less than you looked at last week. Is it where exactly we want to be? And we're going to have to make, perhaps make some adjustments or go back towards 2.8 if we're going to do something different with health, retiree health.
I think you can also though, I mean, we talked about it. I know you and I disagree. But we did reduce one DPW administrative position. But we do still have three basic DPW positions. Blair, Barry, and then a director position. So we still could.
No, this budget would assume that we would have, we have, there was money in there for three. The $80,000 represents what was a superintendent salary.
When you say, so what about the, no, that was, what about the, the motor pool guy? Isn't that pulled out too? Do we pull that out as well?
That is simply, that was going to be reallocated to a, a lower level grounds person to try to meet the demand for work we're not able to keep up with. And two summer, summer hires at, at, you know, $14 an hour to work for 12 weeks to help, again, support either highway or DPW to get the work done. And we can eliminate a grounds position we were going to hope to fill. But we were simply trying to reallocate it to better address the workload to be done.
But didn't we have more than 120 in the budget originally for a director position?
We reduced it to 120. We had 140.
Right.
And then we've also, then we've took, and we, so now it's 120.
Okay.
And we took out 80, which roughly equates to what the superintendent's salary was. So we would end up with two management positions in DPW. That's it.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was what it was.
Yep. That's what it is.
FTEs line up with a direction from the last, the FTEs, they line up from the discussion that we had last time.
No, if you, if we want to not provide another lower, lower laborer position to take care of all grounds does, that's, and we don't have that person in salary. We could do that. But if we were trying to kind of right-size the workforce in DPW to get the work done, we felt that that was important. Summer, summer hires, it's not a big number. Do you remember what that was, the summer hires? We'd have to check. It's small money. It's $14 an hour times, you know.
Well, if I'm, maybe I'm mistaken, but my recollection was that one of the reasons, well, I guess we didn't wait that long. But one of the reasons that we were dealing with the playing fields was because of, they were short help for taking care of the playing field. So if you diminish too far the people who can take care of the greens, then we end up paying for it.
Right. I mean, Blair had done some analysis for, for Ann Proto and Barry that showed the staff we have and the amount of hours they have, you know, especially since we generally don't let them take off time in winter when it snows, and they're sort of taking time off in better weather. That amount of hours we have with the people we have and the hours it takes to do all the, all the tasks, there's more hours of tasks than there are of people. So I, just some very quick math on my phone, the two summer people would be roughly $14,000. It doesn't really get us there.
Now, there was some talk also about redistributing the ROA. Not, not that Judith probably wanted the job, but she inherited it. But about distributing the ROAs to the departments. Now, we do it with fire and police already. So is there any, is there any availability to benefit that 15,000 by putting the ROAs at the department head level and saving that $15,000? And I, and I say that because I know Judith did not plan on doing it. So I don't feel like I'm taking money out of Judith's mouth. But is there a way of us looking at doing that and saving that $15,000 overall?
That's right. I heard the same thing, that if you gave it, and I don't remember all the details, so.
Frankly, I'm, frankly, I'm very concerned, given some of the, the records requests we get of disseminating that across a whole bunch of departments and expecting many more people to be on top of deadlines and requirements and what's, what's protected and what isn't. And, and my employee identified that she's not necessarily keeping up with all of the work that she has within the 25 hours she was working. So I feel it's more, it's going to be better handled by the town. Because we get appealed, unfortunately, fairly regularly by some folks to have that disseminated and really making sure that we're on top of those all the time. I just, you know, maybe we can be, we can learn from it for a year and tighten it up a little bit. But I'm just concerned about our ability to do that well and the town being, you know, in a situation if we can't, so.
There is a requirement that the actual town has a identified and named records access officer.
But are they required to pay them $15,000 a year?
I don't believe there's a requirement as far as the compensation. But I'm just saying that the person does need to be identified so that when people are requesting it.
And I understand what she's saying, but I'm just responding to you because we popped up to say, hey, we need to have an identified person. You could theoretically have an identified person. I'm identified with $0 on the budget.
Correct.
And then the other heads as per statute. Now, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not challenging that. I get what you're saying. I'm just saying you could do it. And since we're exploring all opportunities. But I also hear that there are people, I'm sure within every town, who make things difficult for the people charged with getting it. And so the concern is, is that going to create? So thanks for the $15,000 a year you're going to, you're going to cost us.
Just trying to find opportunity.
I, the other one that concerns me, and I was hope, I was hopeful, is the, is the part-time IT person. You know, there are times when we are absolutely challenged, and this last week has been one, with one person trying to keep up with all regular work for all of our buildings and our 100 users and not drop any balls. I was hopeful that if the, if people did opt out of health insurance, I could find a way to add that back in or think about it in the fall. You know, if the picture becomes a little clearer. Because we've looked at outsourcing and hiring a company, and they're charging much more than we were hoping to pay.
Well, and their rates just went up.
Yeah.
With the library closed, with the library closed, can't we use the library IT person to, to overlap here?
Well, what I've said to the director is that, you know, if, there may be times when my director deserves to take some time off, that if I'm not able to hire him, I'm not able to, you know, have anybody backing him up, that I would occasionally look for some support from the library. I mean.
No, I'm saying like right now. I mean, just going forward. I mean, right now, we're paying an IT person at the library.
Buildings are closed, but people are working. People are still providing services behind the scenes. He may, that person may be helping people on the phone or online access the online services, maybe not to the extent he is. He may be able to come over here. But I'm just saying, overall, we may not be a large town, but our IT needs are high because currently our model is to have in, you know, on-premise servers for, for most things. And we're supporting, you know, a number of buildings. And it's just, it's, it's challenging at times.
Again, it's one of those opportunities as we move down the road is combining ITs maybe with the library where we use both people.
IT was combined at one time in the town's past, and then it was split apart. Schools, library, town.
Maybe something we have to look into.
I don't disagree.
All right.
I'm just concerned about, again, this week has been particularly tough.
Yes. But we got to look forward.
Yep. We do.
That's, that's one of those, another opportunity. I mean, we, you know, we're just, we're identifying opportunities as we move forward. We're not going to all get in the 2021 budget.
Right.
But it certainly is stuff that should be put on for the 2022 budget.
Well, I think that IT consolidation has been a topic amongst the shared services conversations we've been having. There's been a lot of talk about regionalizing IT. So you have a strategic resource, and then you have execution resources on site. So it's definitely something we've been talking about with our, our neighboring communities as well. All right. So that all being said, we're starting to reel in the number here. We're starting to get closer to what I think is going to be our, our final proposal. The issue is that there are a lot of folks who are waiting on bated breath to be able to proceed with their reviews based on what we are going to put forward. So I think what we need to come out of with tonight is some direction as to what those reviews will be based on, most notably the advisory committee. So Blythe, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we need to do a little more work to get back to a good place based on what we were assuming from a insurance perspective. But generally speaking, we're still going to be within this 2.33 to 2.8 kind of range, right?
Yes.
Because the 2.8 didn't have.
It didn't.
Some of the ones that we're currently mulling.
It didn't have any of these changes that are on that last page.
Including the insurance one.
You know, I, I don't, in terms of revenues, I don't want to increase them anymore because I don't feel that would be responsible. And I want to make sure that revenues are attainable. You know, we can go upwards on free cash a little bit. That's, but, you know, we are trying to lower that overall.
Yes. Refresh my memory, the solar power generation, why the big spike again?
Todd, can you help with that one?
What was the question?
Oh, you weren't paying attention?
I was.
The solar power generation in the facility budget. Just refresh my memory, it's up 100, almost $100,000. What was the, is that for the landfill? The landfill solar field?
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
So we get credits from that, which are then processed through for all the electrical components throughout the town, whether it's the police building, this building, schools and things of that sort, which are all tied into those. So then, based on those credits that we buy, they're offsetting those electrical fees. But we do have to pay for those credits through the solar power generation. And the biggest increases are the police station with the utilization of their electric that's over there that was not anticipated based on all the different stuff that's inside the building.
I mean, there are some, some small departments like the library that we have not reduced their budget, and we were trying not to. We can ask for 5,000 here, you know, 5,000 there. It's not going to add up to a meaningful amount. If I had to triage what's in public works, I would keep the full-time person and not the summer help. It's not a big number, but, you know, it's probably 13, $14,000. And we can cobble together some more of those and try to tighten this up a bit more and try and look at what alternative step for retiree health would achieve maybe half of this.
Yeah. I mean, if we push that age up a little bit from 68 and potentially, but.
You'd still be looking at about 2.3 all in because we're just reallocating the expenses for that to somewhere else in order to tighten this up. Because the revenues are, I don't think we should get any more for revenues.
Right.
I, I don't want to promise that even though the transfer, they're suggesting they could bring in 310 for the transfer station, that that would happen. You know, I'd rather, I'd rather understate it the first year and see if it's successful or not.
Yeah.
And also, given the current markets, I don't think we want to go any higher anyways because we have no idea what's going to happen.
I mean, if you look, that, that history of, of our increases is very helpful if you think about this from a recession perspective, that that's what we're really in. It generally takes most, a community, their revenue tail off is about a year after it happens or so. And then there's a period where, you know, everything adjusts, and then slowly it creeps back up again. That's a very, that's a very telling.
Plus, you can see it, right?
Yes, you can.
You can see in '09, it was 5.6, and '10, it was negative 0.49%.
This was brought up at the advisory committee meeting. They had a lot of concerns about the impact of the COVID-19 situation. And Todd had very accurately identified what the trend looked like back the last time that we experienced.
I mean, right now, we might see a reduction in the rest of our year in meal taxes as people are not eating out and not doing as much takeout as we might like them to. But that's probably the only area that's really going to affect us this year.
Not high a number. But it's interesting to a point that Chris had made last time about if you're so high, then you have to fall really far. Look at the difference. I mean, not that, you know, hopefully this is a, this is a, as anticipated, six to eight-week bump that people can survive economically and it doesn't become a true recession. But if it does, having to shave off an additional 1-point whatever as opposed to 5-point whatever is going to be an easier.
The other thing I would do is I would contact the, in terms of overall cost changes, as I'll contact the schools and see if there is any small amount, emphasis on small, adjustment they can make in their budget. Because their budget in here is as presented to us. Is there possibility that they can make a small adjustment that helps the overall?
And there is $100,000 in here between the advisory board and what you have under maintenance of money that isn't allocated to any particular item at this point in time.
Unforeseen costs for.
Unforeseen costs.
Right. Well, don't forget, there's also the same thing in our water and sewer budgets.
Yes.
To allow them to do the same. We're probably spending $21,000 in the next week or two on the library boiler to, to, to repair, put in a new block that we did not plan on spending this year because it is not able to be simply fixed. So these, I just point out because these things come up.
I still, I still, I will, I will fight the argument I fought last week is that, or two weeks ago, is that I, I just, my, I don't believe you should put in any one department's budget, a block of money that large, that, that is not controlled by the board or by the advisory board. I think it allows, it allows money to be spent without having to come forward to this board. And that's a large sum of money, $50,000, a large sum of money to have sitting out there for someone to decide what they want to spend it on. I just think it's, I think it's a mistake. I think if you want to put $100,000 under the advisory board, there is no vendor out there who's going to stand there with his hand out and say, I'm not going to fix your roof, I'm not going to repair your boiler, I'm not going to fix your, your light pole that fell into the middle of the street if you don't pay me cash today. There's not one vendor out there.[1781.14] And I just think when we put those funds, and I know I was criticized for calling it a slush fund, but a fund that isn't identified to any particular item, especially when all the other line items certainly do include expenses, is just, it's just, it's a formula for abuse of, whether it be $1,000 of abuse or $49,000 of abuse.
Well, I can assure you that that doesn't get spent without Todd and I knowing about it. And Todd is the town accountant finance director, having to sign a contract for it.
Sign a what?
Sign a contract for it. I mean, I, perhaps that isn't reassuring, but we are on top of those things and we know about them. And I try to report them to you perhaps sometimes before they've happened or it's been spent, so.
What do we expect to spend of the 2020 of that same line item? Because there was a budget line item in 2020. How much of the 50,000 in 2020 do we expect to spend?
Don't have that off the top of my head. I'd have to get the information.
Well, I could tell you about the library just did.
Twenty-one.
That's 25.
But there was quite a bit that had already had to be spent too. Like, I would say you're probably
We had, we spent some money over at the DPW to put in those, those controls.
Fire station.
And the fire station boiler.
Seven thousand, right?
Yeah, I would say you're fresh out of dough.
Right. Now, the only way we'll be able, because it's been a lighter winter, we have underspent some of the various
Snow removal?
Well, not, in, in facilities specifically, various utility accounts are lower. And I think we're doing well in solar generation.
But with the paper towels and
Toilet paper?
Everything else.
You know, but we're spending more on cleaning supplies and
Purell.
Over time.
So, you know, I mean, we could get you an accounting for it. And what I'm, you know, what I think I'm hearing is that maybe the board would benefit from having more regular finding, you know, budget runs in your packet once a quarter, once every other month, whatever. So you have a better sense of where, when we're spending it, and we can talk about it. I'd be happy to do that. You know, and, and I do, I really do try to make sure you know about these things. Because I don't want anyone to feel that anything is going on that shouldn't be or is inappropriate.
I mean, from my perspective, I get where Chris is coming from, right? I mean, there is an amount of money that is dispersed that we don't necessarily have any oversight over, nor does any other third-party board. I guess when you categorize it like that, I could more understand where you're coming from. When you designate it as a slush fund, I mean, then you think that's the beer money that was left over from your men's softball league. So I, I think that it has a more defined use than that. But I do understand where he's coming from in terms of being looped into when this money is being spent and how it's being spent. So perhaps a more regular outline of where that's coming from and how it's being done would assist in kind of bridging that gap.
Yes, I mean, that's what we are supposed to do for you.
Right.
And if there's some way we can get you that so you feel more comfortable that you know about it, I'm happy to do that.
Is, is that, Chris, does that satisfy your concern or are you more looking for an approval point?
I think that gets us to a better place.
Okay.
And I'm going to add that I thought, I didn't understand what your issue was last time either. I thought you were speaking more that, that it shouldn't be in the budget at all. Where what you're saying is oversight, it should be at a different line item so that there is oversight. Which makes sense in the way that what I was interpreting, what you said, didn't. Because I heard what Mao was saying, and I was like, yeah, you're going to need this during the year. Stuff happens, but you're speaking of oversight, and that's different. I get that. Today I get it. I didn't get it last time.
That's all right.
Today I got it. It takes me a while.
I might have not presented it appropriately either.
Somewhat on topic.
No.
Somewhat on topic, but not, we actually did not need to spend any, we did not ask, have to ask advisory to approve the money for the fire truck last week because we identified that we never had filled the vehicle maintenance superintendent position, and we had that money in salary. So we're planning to spend 21 on an in-engine
Rebuild.
Rebuild.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just trying to get the words of what it means to build, rebuild the engine in the truck.
Right.
There's a term for that.
Engine rebuild.
Thank you.
In chassis.
In chassis rebuild.
It's got a broken piston ring.
Awesome. So
Car mechanics.
And we have, we have $37,000 available in that salary line item. So we don't need to transfer it. We could spend it within DPW. But we identify to advisory that we come back for the year-end transfers that you and they approve. We will ask you to approve moving from whatever we needed from salary to expense. So expenses for future years have been shown accurately, yeah? All right, so let us do some more adjusting.
Advisory canceled their meeting for tomorrow, so there is no immediate urgency to have something for them to review. But even if we end up postponing town meeting, we are still only going to be doing that for a month or so. So there is still
So can I say that, would it be fair for us to work on the premise that as long as we stay somewhere between 2.3 and 2.8, we, the board is
How about zero and 2.8?
You're killing me.
2.3 and 2.5 sounds really good to me. I just heard that beautiful.
2.3 to 2.8 sounds fun.
2.3 and 2.5 was a nice number.
Come on, look at those other years.
Something more. I'm just saying we wouldn't be mad.
I, I think, I think, you know, a lot of people, I mean, I got, someone mentioned to me Friday night that a department said that if it was, if it was for weeder, we wouldn't even have vehicles to drive around in. But I think the, I think the point is the exercise, which I think was sort of pooh-poohed by a lot of people that we asked for this budget year, is yielding some good results.
No, I agree with that.
I think it's, I think, and I think, you know, there's more to be done, obviously, as we move forward. But I think, I hopefully people, I think the taxpayer appreciates the fact that it, a deeper look was taken. And it's because of, obviously, the people in place, and that's why.
I've, I've heard some department heads I've heard department heads say the same thing. We haven't done this either in a couple of years or at all. And it's not a bad thing to do.
No.
You know? It helps, if people understand it, that's what should happen.
Yeah.
They need to.
Yeah?
They need to.
I wouldn't say it was enjoyable, but it was important.
Gets easier.
So that being said, what I was kind of alluding to there was that we came out of this with a range for you guys to take back and for us to potentially take forward before we would necessarily have to meet again. So from my perspective, the 2.33 up to the 2.8 where we were before is acceptable from my perspective.
Okay. Well, we will re, we will rework this some more. We don't have a meeting actually for three weeks because of the way the Tuesdays fall in, in March. So we'll come back with where we are and what we did to get there.
And Chris, you said that you were more looking for 2.33 to 2.5?
Isn't that what you said, 2.3 to 2.5?
I don't think so.
2.81.
I can pretty much guarantee it'll be about the 2.33 because we're all, we're doing a shift in the
Yeah, he's just moving money.
It's carbon stone.
I was teasing about the zero, but I mean, I'm also saying if you just
Stone, Mr. Linmark.
Found another rock and then looked under the other
Found you a huge rock!
I'm just saying, I wouldn't reject it. Just saying.
You did.
You'd be remiss if we didn't say thank you very much, well.
No, but that one I already knew about. That one's been my trouble.
Thank you, Todd. All right. Next up, please consider adopting a remote participation policy.
I would actually suggest, I mean, I think, I appreciate Mr. Rosenberg's comments, but given that we're, the state has relaxed this right now. We, you, we put this on the agenda on Thursday before we knew they were passing that change. So are we ready to adopt one full, full stop? Or are we ready to operate under that and then learn from that and revisit this later?
My understanding of the direction was for those who had adopted a remote participation policy had relaxed standards by which they could execute said remote participation. I could be completely wrong with that. And that's why, you know, oh, and I think we might have a knowledgeable resource in the audience. Mr. Rosenberg, please feel free to chime in.
Relaxing our new rules too?
Um, you're mistaken.
I guess we are.
It was for everybody, whether or not they had adopted remote participation. So even though I'm in favor of Norfolk adopting remote participation,
Cut the legs out for money.
You don't, you don't need to do it, you know, in order to get the benefit of the executive order that Governor Baker issued.
Very good.
So that, on that point, I'm suggesting perhaps we work through this new normal for however long it is. And then we learn from that and decide whether it worked well for us or not because we're certainly going to be out there using remote participation software shortly and see if we should make that a permanent change.
I mean, we have six individuals who have been with us so far tonight, so I would say that it's working as intended. The next big step will be to transition to having an entire meeting with participants in the meeting and board members also be remote. So we'll work on that as well.
I like the idea of tabling it because the concern I had when it was, or at least how I interpreted it, when it was told to me that it was coming back on was simply during the time that there was an issue, which isn't in my binder. So I was like, we're going to have to rewrite this and put it in. And to take it off the list is one less thing to wordsmith because what I see in my binder is permanent. So maybe I'm missing a page, but I got a text saying it was just for the virus, and I got a thing in here and speeches about permanent, and so I'm glad we're off.
So just to cover quickly, we
I know this says Medway, so I understand.
Yeah, that was, it was a template.
Right, I get that. But if the less we have to do wordsmithing
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, wholeheartedly agree.
At the table, do you know what I mean? As opposed to behind the scenes while we're observing, just the better.
Given, given Mr. Rosenberg's insight, I agree. I don't think that we should adopt a permanent policy to be able to, you know, accommodate for the immediate needs. We put this on the agenda an hour before we posted last Thursday. And Charlie Baker came out and issued that, you know,
No, I get why you put it.
Like, three hours later, right? So we did this before that had come out.
I understand why it's on.
Yeah.
That, you know, when I got informed by the, the town that it was going on, but it was just going on because of the coronavirus. And so I said, okay, great, that makes sense. But I don't think it makes sense. I understand that every policy includes a section that you can always then vote to revoke the policy again, but I'm not playing that game. Either the policy is for the duration of the state of emergency or I am voting no on it. And the, the fact that we can now, because that happened, I understand why we had to do that.
Yeah.
But the fact that we now can off-list it and then deal with any wordsmithing on an if, as, and when needed basis rather than on the floor, if you, for lack of a better term, I think is advantageous, right?
Very good. So as it pertains to remote participation, we will not be moving to adopt any policy. We will be following this, the direction from the state. We will be moving forward with Zoom Pro as our option for remote participation for both attendees and for board members. And hopefully we'll have some great learnings as we go through the next couple of weeks to identify the value and any opportunities that exist with policies such as this. All right. Our next item is to please consider approval of a contract with Stantec for various environmental engineering services.
So we require different services, mostly related to the landfill. We have obligations to do, to monitor that site and report, provide, bleh, provide reports to the state. We also utilize them, I'm just going, looking back at my notes, for our catch basin cleanings. They have to be tested and reported to the state. And, let's see, the groundwater monitoring wells, an annual subsurface wastewater treatment system to the DEP, and our catch basins. So we have had a contract with Stantec for a number of years. It was a much more simplified document. I indicated the DPW that I prefer that, that the town signed contracts written by and for the town, not written by and for companies. So we, we have worked through with Stantec the language that we prefer. We've made a couple of edits through council, and this is the recommendation. It's a one-year contract, and at our sole discretion, can be extended for up to two more years, one year at a time. So that's what it is.
Chris, questions, comments?
No questions.
Nope.
CC, none? With that, I would move that the board approve a contract with Stantec Consulting Services for various environmental engineering services.
Second.
Here a second, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our next item is to please consider approval of a contract extension with R. Kadesh Escavation for DPW Services.
So in, prior to 20, for 2018, the town had gone out to bid for various other DPW services, drainage, paving prep, grading, site work, on-call, emergency water work, and retained R. Kadesh services. And that contract allowed for two one-year extensions. One was granted for 2019, and we're asking for one for 2020. There is no change in the cost. Their fees are the same. We simply want to exercise this, and we would go out to bid later this year for future contracts after that.
Do we make sure we give them the wage schedule in these contracts?
Oh, yes.
So they have the, they have the prevailing wage schedule? And they do submit, they do submit the prevailing wage certified payrolls with every invoice?
Yep.
Okay. Just to make sure, because the state's cracking down on
Excellent.
towns that are not requiring this.
No, we are.
Yeah. Otherwise, I mean, most people, I'd say that he actually provides a valuable subcontractor service to our DPW.
I apologize if this wasn't brought to you earlier this year than this meeting. It just was a slight overstep, oversight in change of administration at DPW. But that's the only thing I want to just point out.
Thank you. CC, anything else on this one?
Nope.
Chris?
Nope.
With that, I move the board approve a contract extension with R. Kadesh Escavation for calendar year 2020.
Second.
Here a second, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Our next item tonight is to please consider exercising the town of Norfolk's right of first refusal to purchase a property located at 75 Cleveland Street.
So since last, the last meeting, we have received some input from both the Historical Commission and the CPC. Historical Commission, although they were here through the chair to ask for a little more time to look at, they've done so and determined that it would not be in the town's best interest to buy it from the historical perspective. And, and there's also an email in there from the chair of the CPC saying their, their view on this has not changed from last week. And so our recommendation to you is to not exercise the town's right to a first refusal and let the people who have put in a purchase and sale go forward with their purchase. I think it was, it was helpful to remind everybody in this process that if, if in the future we would want to do something along these lines, that you have 120 days to exercise your right of first refusal. But then, once you do, the clock is ticking of 90 days to actually affect the
Right.
the, the purchase itself, have the money in place. And so that also played into things a little bit. Of course, this is all pre-COVID-19.
Right.
But it's still relevant, and I think it's just good to have everyone know that.
Very good.
Is, is there any opportunity, we own, the town owns, I think, another 18 or somewhat acres behind this parcel, which was bought, I think, using CPC funds for conservation slash recreation land. The problem is we can't get to it because you have to go over this parcel to get to what we actually own. Is there any way to talk to historical, the prospective owners, see if we get some kind of easement? So that could be used as
Could certainly entertain that conversation.
I think it's worthwhile asking them. I mean, because we do own it, and, and you can't get there. There's no access to it because it was accessed through this parcel.
I mean, the town would have to, it would have to take a town meeting vote, whether there's a price or there's no price.
Yeah, I'm asking if they do it without a price, maybe, just to, it's a big enough parcel and enough frontage there that they could probably, maybe if they wanted to carve out a piece for the town. I don't know if the prospective owners want to, but it's always worth a shot to ask them, would they be willing to?
It doesn't cost to ask?
Yeah.
And find out if there's an interest, and if there's an interest, we could come back to you and discuss that with you in executive session, decide if you want to move forward, and the details around that.
Right. Just worth, worth, worth the question.
Oh, it's a great call out, actually. It's a good point in the process to do that. CC, anything on this one?
No.
All right. So with that, I move that the board vote to waive the town's right to notice of sale and waive the town's right of first refusal to purchase 18.54 acres of land at 75 Cleveland Street pursuant to Massachusetts GL 61.
Second.
Here a second, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, please consider appointing Elizabeth Whitney to the 150th Anniversary Parade Committee. Committee that is going to be extended.
So that committee currently has two members that you've appointed previously. Ms. Whitney has, you've got her application in your packet. She'd like to join the committee. I think she's already been to some meetings. And there's an email in here from Mr. Terrio saying he would welcome he would welcome having her on the committee, so.
When I noted the extension, I was more referencing the Time Traveler's Dinner that already pushed into the fall as opposed to the parade itself.
And on that, for one second, I was, we were contacted by the Chair of Historical asking if whatever they haven't spent in this year's budget on the dinner, could we add to next year's budget? You know, obviously the unspent monies will go back, but we will have to account for that adjustment in what we put back forth, back in front of you for the budget for next year. Sorry, the words are starting to go.
9:30 hit. That's what happens. Chris, anything you'd like to add?
Couldn't think of a better person on that board. It's Betsy.
I know.
She's a great historian of Norfolk and she'll be super.
All right. With that, I move that the board appoint Ms. Elizabeth Whitney to the 150th Anniversary Parade Committee.
Second.
Here a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Next up, please consider the appointment of the Animal Inspector for a one-year period effective May 1st, 2020.
I will recuse myself from the vote on this, obviously, but any information I can provide, I will.
So this is the annual form that comes out that requires that the, the town nominate a person to serve in this role. And the, the appointment is from, actually from May 1st of '22 to April 30th of '21. Mr. Weider has been providing that service for I'm not sure how many years. I don't know that answer off the top of my head. And so I have scripted the motion as with his name in it, just for continuity. So.
Chris, anything you'd like to add for your potential appointment?
No, it's a, it's actually the, it's the, it's the barn inspection. So anybody who has any kind of chickens, horses, or cattle, anything, all their barns are inspected. That paperwork goes into the state every year. They actually will not send out the nomination paper, papers. If you don't have that barn book, they call it in, and it covers all the quarantines in town. So any quarantine, anybody who gets bit by a dog or any dog that gets bit by another dog or a wild animal, quarantine is issued. That goes to the state as well. And, and then follow up with the person being, being bit and the person whose animal bit is, is also done. So it covers those two things. I will say that this, this inspector has never filed an expense item in the 15 years that he's done the job. So there's been zero expenses other than the labor associated with account, this account. So I think we've done a pretty good job of keeping it down. It is, and it's pretty consistent. Plainville is about the same for this role. Rentham is much less, but they actually handle the quarantines through their animal control officer. They don't handle their quarantines through their barn, their inspector. So they handle it a little differently. So probably at the end of the day, it's about the same.
Is it, do you get compensated for it?
Get, you get labor 20, about $2,300 a year.
Yeah, I, I approve the, the payroll once a month. It's $209?
Yeah. It takes about four to five days to do the barn inspections and then the quarantines are as, as they come up. And you probably get about 20 a year. So I think it worked out to $12 an hour. It's a very lucrative job.
So one of the things that I researched was a sitting member of the Select Board's ability to hold a paid position in town.
Yes.
Because, you know, that's, that's new, right? That's not something that I think that we've encountered before. So I did some research. There's some language in there that is pretty general in nature. And so I brought it back up with our town council. And he identified from what he was looking at and with case law, that there isn't a, a specific instance that would preclude you from serving in that position while sitting on the Board of Selectment. In fact, I think that there's language that specifically addresses a sitting member on the Board of Selectment being able to serve in certain capacities like that. So from his perspective, his advice was that there was nothing from a legal standpoint that would preclude Chris from holding that position while being on the board. Just to cover all bases and ensure that we didn't have anything coming down the road.
I think there's actually two sections of the ethics code. I think it's section 19 and I don't know the other one. I want to say like 29, that they suggest you fill out and submit to the state to make sure you cover all bases, which I will, I will do in this case, just to make sure.
Perfect. Thank you. That was the only thing I wanted to know. CC, anything else from your perspective?
Nope.
All right. With that, and this is just a, a two-person show, I move that the board appoint Mr. Christopher Weider as the Animal Inspector for a one-year term beginning May 1st, 2020.
Well, I gotta second it now, right?
Do.
Seconded.
Further discussion?
It says Ms. Christopher Weider. Should be Mr. Christopher Weider.
We're all copy paste.
I said mister. It was verbalized appropriately.
Friendly amendment.
Here a second. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Next up is please consider the adoption of a code of conduct.
So in your book is a tracked version and a clean version of the comments that we either received from, from CC or I took notes on, that I hope to capture everything that was brought up last time to get to a point where this is perhaps ready for the board to vote on.
I have more questions.
Excellent.
Do you? Do you want to go first or?
No, you go first.
All right. So the first one is on page two of four, subsection B, bottom dot, refrain from making statements or promises to, as to how you will vote on quasi judicial matters. What, what's, what does that mean? Quasi judicial matter? What's that? Can, just give me an example. I just, I, I don't know what it means. So if I don't know what it means, I might go and do it.
I'm trying to think of an example and.
Would that be like, maybe I'm going to vote on a variance for?
Right.
What was that? What was the one, the?
Just wonder what the Select Board has.
Meeting House Lane wrote a variance for the property.
Sure. I mean, I'm just trying to think of what type like that would come before this board.
This board or a board we appoint.
Yeah.
It could come up when, what we've had in the last two years is we've had people on dual boards. I was on the planning board in my first year as a selectman. Chris is on the ZBA.
He's, he's on the ZBA now and you appoint the ZBA.
Okay.
So there's a possibility.
All right. So that was it. I just didn't know what the heck that was. That was my issue there.
Yep.
Conduct of Select Board in relation to the Town Administrator, because this is directly to the Select Board. This isn't other people, obviously.
Correct.
And it, the first one I had was the paragraph under the one where you changed it. So the highlighted one. So the highlighted one says, give the Town Administrator full responsibility for discharging their duties as defined by the special act established and enacting any decisions or solutions approved by the board.
Yeah, I changed that to try to be clear that I, that the person holding the position has the ability to do the job that's in the town's bylaws now. Or the, or the board gives them direction to do something like come up with a solution for, you know, making the transfer station run in the black.
Right.
Or.
More profitable.
Something else. So once you decide, you make a decision, the Town Administrator has the, has the ability to go out and carry out that decision. The board changes the decision, then something else has to happen.
Okay. The, I, I still have some concerns about it, but I get it. So then the next one says refrain from giving orders or directions to the Town Administrator for action as an individual board member. What does that mean?
It means that the board, the board, individual members of the board don't actually have authority.
Right.
And so wants to make sure that, that one doesn't call up and say, I want you to go and, you know, reorganize that department. I'd like that done, you know, by the next meeting. And the other board members haven't given that direction. It's, it's making sure that board members need to.
Right. That makes sense.
Ask questions.
I, I think, and, and I, I just wonder if it wouldn't be better to just have a section or a paragraph instead. It just seems, it's just awkwardly phrased that just acknowledges that the Select Board has no authority as an individual member, which may cover a multitude of potential sins. That, right? With the, there is no authority, notwithstanding anybody's heading clerk or otherwise, as an individual. I don't know. I mean, because I get what you're trying to get at. It just seems.
Okay.
And then the last question on this paragraph, and then I have, is the last one, it says, individual Select Board member should refrain from providing information to the Town Administrator that they would not be willing to share with other Select Board members. And I wrote down two things. I wrote down, has this happened? Are people telling you stuff and then directing you not to tell the other members of the Select Board?
No.
And then are you, is this in their role as a, a board? It doesn't define the role. So in other words, if I came to you as a friend and said, there's a sale at TJ Maxx, but don't tell Kevin because he's going to clear out the shoe department and it will really make me angry.
Fair concern.
Am I violating this if I'm just doing it as a friend to a friend as opposed to a, a select man, right? Is, should it be just in their role, an individual Select Board member, in their role as a member of the Select Board shall refrain, right? Because maybe somebody wants to confide in you about, I don't know. Maybe, maybe I'm overthinking it. And then the last thing was, I thought the second paragraph in subsection D, well, I guess the last two things was overly broad, direct questions for town staff and/or requests for additional background information through the Town Administrator. So if I stroll in and I have a question for, you know, as a, as a town member, for any member like of a board, like I want to ask Carol a question or I want to ask the assessor a question, I have to instead, this reads somewhat like I now have to go toddle and hold on. I got, Carol, I got a question for you, but I gotta go run it up the flagpole upstairs.
It's not meant to ask the, the, the.
And I guess that's why I wrote overly broad.
Well, but the, I think the intent behind it is, is the administrator needs to be aware of what questions are coming and make sure, I always want to make sure that every member has all the information that every, any other member would want. And I always feel it's important to, in support the staff to know what questions board members have because maybe I have information that this department head doesn't have. Or maybe I want to make sure that the, that, that department has, is being asked questions and not being given direction that they shouldn't be.
This doesn't say, I mean, this, but this doesn't answer that.
It's about, it's about being able to manage the organization and not having board members, I'm not saying it happens, go around the Town Administrator and, and, and make their ability to manage the organization effectively possible.
So I'm just telling you that I think that that paragraph is overly broad, that I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but I think that that's overly broad. And then the last paragraph that I question is never publicly criticize an individual employee or a department. Concerns about staff performance should only be made to the Town Administrator through private communication. And again, I get what you're trying to accomplish and I support what you're trying to accomplish. But, but this again, if, if there's something that you think is going wrong, never publicly criticizing, just even as a, a towns person, like there are, there are grades. I mean, I can't think of any example because I don't typically criticize the people that I work with. But maybe there would be like, oh, you know, can you believe that they, that the, that the town closed last week? Why did you get closed? I don't know why they closed. I, I wish they hadn't done it that way. Is that a criticism?
Well, I mean.
Is it me as a person? I don't, I'm just telling you my concerns.
In some, in some of the meetings prior, you know, earlier in this, you know, administration, we had some pretty pointed.
Which is why I say I get what we're trying to get to. I just don't know that we're entirely there. There's a difference between, you know, a constructive criticism and, and insults and.
Sure.
Hyperbolic criticism, right? I just, and I'm, I'm happy to sit with you over some cocktails and help once that we're not six feet apart, or even when you're six feet apart, to come up with some.
Sure.
Suggestions. I just, those are my.
That would, that would help.
It sounds like the wording of these things.
Because I get what you're trying to do and I support what you were trying to do. But I think that they, my, my lawyer brain is like, ooh.
And I think we've got to tap into that a little bit to be able to get the wording more specific.
That's all I was saying.
If, if you're open to that, I think that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, that's why I, as long as there's, you know, some prosecco or something.
I, I had similar ones. And then even that one, I, concerns, concerns about staff should, performance should only be made to the Town Administrator through private communications, which almost, it doesn't contradict, but it almost contradicts is that don't give anything to the Town Administrator that you're not going to give to your fellow board members. So if I have a problem with.
I mean, it's again, it's about the Town Administrator, me or somebody else in the future, who needs to have the, have the, the authority and the ability to run the organization and be responsible for it. And so if there's a, if, if there's a concern that a board member has about somebody, they should, they should come to the Town Administrator, you know, not by email or, or some other recorded item and say, I'm concerned about the performance of the, the Health Director. We don't happen to have one. And I think they haven't handled some aspects of the COVID-19 thing appropriately. And I want to talk to you about that because I think, you know, so that the Town Administrator can take it in and decide what they're going to do about it.
But as I said, but then up above you say individuals, you know, in the town should not be willing, provide information to the Town Administrator that they would not be willing to share with other board members. So how do I give it to you? I have to give it to them too at the same time, shouldn't I?
No, it's just, that's, that would be unwilling. Like I, I read that one as more telling our secret, like Kevin and the shoes.
Well, I just think it needs some cleaning. I agree with, it just needs some cleaning up.
And I think a session.
It's a little broad.
But CC will be able to get us to a, a good place with that.
Right. Yeah. I believe we've taken this from what some similar towns have done. I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong. It's just was.
Right.
Had been vetted by others and it might be, was a place to start.
And I appreciate you understanding.
Now, I did ask, do we have an employee code of conduct? Because one of the things we talked about is this, this binds the Select Board. It binds the boards that we appoint. But do we have an employee code of conduct that, that I think should be in unison with this? Because I think there's been situations where employees have jumped up and do we have that? And I think that should go hand in hand with this.
Well, we're not doing COVID-19 all day, every day. We'll definitely work on that.
Well, because I think we talked about the fact that what we really need isn't so much an anti-bullying policy. It's, it's more of a, I can't remember the word, but there was another policy.
Harassment policy.
Harassment policy. But other than that, I mean, I think once you remove some of the things that this is attempting to protect against, you're not going to necessarily see as much of a sense of people needing to jump up and, and respond in kind. But.
I understand. We'll find time to work on that.
Okay. Anything else on that one?
Nope.
Direction, feedback, thoughts? All right. Our last action at the end of the evening is to please consider approving a request from the Norfolk Lions to erect a field of flags on the Norfolk Town Hill from Sunday, May 17th to Saturday, May 30th. Hold a ceremony on Town Hill on Memorial Day, Monday, May 25th, 2020 at approximately 9:00 AM, and place a banner on Town Hill from May 18th to May 23rd, 2020, all of which pending our ability to go outside and do these things.
I know. Very widely spaced parade on Memorial Day.
It takes four and a half hours because everybody's marching six feet.
Six feet apart.
Joking aside, I mean, we would just approve this now, not with the consideration that there might be delays later, right?
Please.
Sure.
Okay.
Do it. Don't make me beg.
It's like, whatever.
I ceased being able to speak 20 minutes ago. I need you people to just get done.
All right. Chris, any notes?
No questions.
CC?
No.
I move that the board approve Norfolk Lions' request to erect a field of flags on Norfolk Town Hill from Sunday, May 17th to Saturday, May 30th, 2020. Hold a ceremony on Town Hill on Memorial Day, Monday, May 25th, 2020, at approximately 9:00 AM, and place a banner on Town Hill from May 18th to May 23rd, 2020.
Second.
Here a second. Do I, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm starting to lose it too.
Starting. So sweet.
All right. Let's get to our warrants. Mr. Weider, you're the big winner.
Yes. The following warrants have been signed and request approval of the following warrants. 22820 in the amount of $776,828.24 on 332020 in the amount of $2,116,542.56 on 332020 in the amount of $63,6158 on 31020 in the amount of $1,675 and on 3102020 in the amount of $530,965.45.
That was a motion that requires a second.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 I was kind of waiting for you to second. Are you not allowed to second?
No, I can second if I want to.
All right, well, you know.
I do so much talking anyway. I want to give everybody a chance, yeah. Okay, that does it for our agenda. Blythe, anything else from you?
Yes, so the, as you know, the meeting that we were going to have jointly with Plainville and Rentham is not happening tomorrow night. I just saw an email from Kevin Sweet saying, excuse me, from Jennifer Thompson saying Plainville could do Tuesday or Thursday next week. So while I have you here, I just thought I'd ask if is there a better night for you guys to have a remote meeting to do that?
Either is fine for me.
I am fine.
I am fine as well. I apologize, I missed a comment from an online participant who was looking for more clarification as to why CC was looking to further clarify the language of the code of conduct policy. And I think we answered that as we went along and identified that there was just some opportunity to make it more specific and identify more clearly what the intent was, as opposed to leaving it broad and leaving it more general in nature. Is that right?
Yeah, I just thought that there was places where it wasn't tight enough, that you could, you know, yeah, it's too broad.
Okay.
Query. Are we going back to answering questions through each?
Not necessarily. I think that this, we're in a trial period right now with how remote participation is going to impact the way that we handle these meetings.
Because if they were in the audience...
And they raise their hand during the conversation and ask you, hey, is there a specific reason why you're looking for more specificity? And, you know, granted, this question could have come before we went through that whole explanation, too. It could have come the second that you identified bullet number one. But as you went through the rest of it, it could have been captured. I could look at a timestamp and see when it came across.
I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, happy to qualify it. It's just, I recollect that we had decided that we were, you get your comment at the beginning, and then...
You get a short 30-second interjected thing, if you'd like, during the course of the meeting, if we determine that it's relevant to the course of...
And adds something.
And adds something, right. So I, in most of my outlines for what we're going to be doing tonight, I identified if we felt that the comment was appropriate, we would include it in what we were talking about.
And that's fine. I'm just wondering if going forward, are we having a different set of rules for people who are participating online? Or are we having the same set of rules for them as we have for the people in the audience?
Same set of rules as we have for the people in the audience, is the intent.
Cool.
The last thing I would bring up is that there has been a large number of emails back and forth between town administrators and managers today about whether or not we need to declare a state of emergency in order to access any federal funds. I asked that question of Peter last night. He didn't think we did. Some, I'd say it's running half and half the towns that have not taken any action said the federal action, the state action is quite sufficient. And others saying, we're voting to declare a state of emergency just to make sure we're covered. So I'm not asking you to take any action tonight, but if we come back to the next meeting on March, excuse me, April 7th, or we have to have a reason for a meeting before that, I may ask you to do that. So I'm not confident we need to right now.